Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the November 16, 2010 meeting of the Glendale City Council. May we have the roll call, please?
Councilmembers Raymond.
Here.
Friedman.
Here.
Quintero.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Aaron Najarian.
Here. Councilmember Weaver, would you lead us in the flag salute, please?
Join with me in our flag salute.
Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for the invocation which will be delivered by Captain Rio Ray of the Salvation Army.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we come here today with a united purpose, to make Glendale a safer, stronger, and better community. We are thankful for the many blessings you have given us, this beautiful city, the diversity, the integrity of our leaders, and their desire to do good in our community. God, we pray right now that you would give us the compassion to serve and to minister to those around us. We ask for your help with all the obstacles that are ahead. We pray that you would grant our leaders wisdom, inspiration, courage, and strength. You of us here this night, in your name, amen.
May we have your report, please?
The agenda for the November 16, 2010 regular meeting of the Glendale City Council is postponed on Wednesday, November 10, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you. And the next item?
Under presentation and appointments, number three on the agenda is 3A Agenda Preview for the meetings of November 23, 2010.
Mr. Starbird.
Yes, I'll go to Zuzette Mullins for the preview. Zuzette?
Mayor Najarian, council members. For the agenda for November 23, under Housing Authority, we do not have any items on the agenda. For Redevelopment Agency, there's also no items on the agenda. We have a joint public meeting of the Glendale City Council and the Glendale Redevelopment Agency, Director of Community Redevelopment and Housing Business Friendly Principles, sponsored by the Southern California Association of Government. It's a resolution adopting business-friendly principles. For the council meeting of November 23, we have several items under consent and under adoption of ordinances. We have authorizing an amendment to the contract between the City Council of the City of Glendale and the Board of Administration of the California Public Employee Retirement System. We also have an item under the adoption of ordinance for ordinance amending the zoning map to reflect zoning designation change from R1R to R1 related to zone change, P-Z-O-N, P-zone, 2010-003, for certain properties located along Hollister Terrace and adjacent area. Under action items, we have Director of Information Services, recommendation for the purchase of consultation services for the City Services Interface Project. Reap... Apologize. Motion approving a change order to Edge Soft, Inc., in the amount of $85,000 plus a 10% contingency for the total of $93,830. Calling for giving a notice of general municipal election to be held on Tuesday, April 5, 2011. Resolution consenting to consolidating the general municipal election for the Glendale Unified School District and the Glendale Community College District. Resolution calling for general municipal election establishing a stipend for service... for services. Resolution requesting services for registered voters. And resolution adopting a policy regarding candidate costs for April 5, 2011, general municipal election. We also have Director of Public Works regarding bail amounts related to parking violators... violations. Resolution adopting implementation of new parking violation bail schedule fines in the City of Glendale, Resolution Number 09-47. And that conclude the agenda for November 23.
Thank you very much. And what is the next item, please?
City Council and staff comments.
Mr. Weaver.
I'd like to ask staff if next year, in January, after the dust settles on potential discussions that are going on regarding plastic bags, County of LA is working on that, think Long Beach and Santa Monica also working on something along that line. Now it has some legal ramifications on it. Think it'd be good after the dust settles for us to discuss what's left. Think we've... We're beginning to receive emails about what we're doing about plastic bags. I don't think now's the time to do that. Sound reasonable, Mr. Starbird? If it doesn't, tell me.
So you're asking after the first of the year, the dust settles, the county...
Report or second discussion.
Just having a status report on it?
Yeah, and just see if it's worth discussing.
Certainly can. We need to have a concurrence to bring something back.
I'll second that.
Don't know where it'll go, but...
Okay.
That's it.
Just briefly, I was honored to attend the Armenian bone marrow donor registry Walk of Life this Saturday, which started at Glendale Memorial Hospital, wound its way up five kilometers, ended at Verdugo Park. It was a very, very nice and well-attended event, raising money for that group which types bone marrow donors, and of course, bone marrow is used in a variety of treatments related to cancer treatments. My next question is I... Desk in my office is quite a mess, and as I was digging through it today, I had a few extra moments. I came across a memo regarding a road diet test case proposed for Verdugo Road between Colorado and Glendale, and I believe it involves creating a center left-turn-only lane and one lane in each direction, north and south. I would like to have a discussion on that.
Mayor, if I can, let me update you, because that memo's actually out of date. The staffs continue to look at areas where we might, through an experiment, do a road diet, and we'll be bringing that to you, but the focus now is not that section. I forget what is being focused on currently, but it's not that section of Verdugo.
Locust Center Avenue.
Yeah, Locust Center Avenue, so but that'll be... That will be coming to you.
But it'll be discussed before you decide to do it.
Yes.
Okay. I obviously didn't get that memo, or it's somewhere deeper in my desk.
Well, it should be actually further toward the top. It came in after that memo.
That's one, Mr. Mayor, where I asked the questions already.
Thank you, Mr. Weaver.
Location, three schools in that region.
Thank you for your vigilance, picking up things that I don't get.
I was gonna ask for it to be agendized last week until I was told it was dead.
Did I miss anything else?
Yes, we are chipping in to get you a housekeeper for your office.
I need one.
Okay. I don't have any other items. Let's move on to the next item, please. I'm sorry, did staff have any comments? Next item?
Next item is a consent calendar. The following is a routine and may be acted upon by one motion. Any member of council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such request before a motion is proposed. There was... There were two cards submitted to pull 5A.
Okay. 5A will be pulled, leaving 5B through E. Is there a motion on those?
No.
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Raymond.
Yes.
Friedman.
Here.
Quintero.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Aaron Najarian.
Yes. 5A, please.
5A is General Manager of Glendale Water and Power regarding provide analytical laboratory services for drinking water and environmental compliance. At A1 is motion authorizing City Manager to enter into a one-year professional services agreement, PSA, with MWH Laboratory in an amount not to exceed $154,010... I'm sorry, $154,010 with the option for two one-year annual renewals.
Thank you. The first speaker is Richard Espirito, three minutes, and followed by Larry Richardson.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council and staff. I am Richard Espirito. I'm in favor of this motion. I think it is very important that we do test for the quality of our water here in the City of Glendale. However, after reviewing that 37-page report, there's a number of things that we do find this very... I do find this very interesting. One is the amount of arsenic in the water, the amount of lead, and the amount of mercury in the water. After doing a little bit of research, we've... I come to find that arsenic is a substance that not only causes problems for people, but it also causes very serious problems with young adults and infants in small quantities. The gentleman who will be following me will be also speaking regarding the issue of fluorides, but I wanted to talk about these heavy metals. One of the other interesting issues that I would like to bring to the attention is that until I saw this report today, the staff report, I wondered why these reports that are being done aren't made available online to the general public. I think this is something the DWP should seriously consider, is to have these reports online so we, the people of the City of Glendale, would have the right to know if these... how toxic the water that we are drinking is, and I would like seriously to have the DWP consider this recommendation of mine. And with that, I'll conclude my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Larry Richardson.
Good evening, and thanks for letting me say a few words. First off, concerning water quality, there's new research that fluoride, especially the kind of fluoride that the... is in our water here in Glendale enhances absorption of lead about 300%. So we can get a false sense of security as per our actual intake, and lead's linked to all causes of mortality, cataract formation, and also ADD and juvenile delinquency. A large study at Dartmouth, 280,000 children linked lead levels to all of those factors, and also found twice as many children with unacceptable lead levels in areas where the water was fluoridated with fluorosilic acid, which is what the municipal water here has. One other thing concerning infants, the CDC and the American Dental Association in recent years has advised against using fluoridated water for infant formulas, and I don't think this is widely known. There's no push to inform people. There's solid evidence that it increases fluoresces in the child's teeth, and that's just what we see on the outside. That means that the body's getting too much fluoride. That's actually the American Dental Association's actual words, they're getting too much fluoride. Fluoride goes into bone. We have a rising level of fractures among children. We have a rising amount of thyroid problems, which may also be fluoride-linked. I know you can't immediately do something about that, but it's something I hope we all keep in mind, and if it would be possible to use the pharmaceutical-grade fluoride, there's a lot less absorption of lead, perhaps less absorption of arsenic, barium, and the other metals that are unavoidably in water, but optimally wouldn't be there at all. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't have any other cards on this item. Again, this item is to retain a testing laboratory which would actually test the compounds and chemicals referred to by the two previous speakers, and this item does not indicate that we are making a decision as to whether or not to fluoridate the water.
I'll move the item.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Starbird.
Pat Hayes, can you help me here relative to the question of fluoride in the water? That's correct relative to this report. This is about retaining a firm to perform eye count somewhere in the neighborhood of 109 or 10 different constituents in our water to meet State Clean Water Act and state health standards, but with respect to fluoride, I'm afraid I can't answer your question.
Thanks, Mr. Starbird. Pat Hayes, Principal Civil Engineer, Water, Glendale Water and Power. First of all, the Consumer Confidence Report is published every year, which contains a very long list of chemicals that we analyze for, in some cases almost daily, in the water, and that is, from my knowledge, online, and it is mailed to each customer in the system. We meet all of the health requirements by both the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency and then their surrogate, which administers it, the State of California Department of Public Health. We have numerous sources for supply in this city for water. Our wholesaler, Metropolitan Water District, is one of those. The rest is from groundwater and from recycled water. The water we receive from Metropolitan Water District is treated chloraminated water, which is fluoridated, and that also meets all health standards by those same agencies I just mentioned a moment.
So anyone who's concerned with the fluoridation should take that up with the Metropolitan Water District? Is that the appropriate agency to address such concerns?
That would be a good point to start. They have some excellent resource information on their website about the practices they do, and they supply water to 19 million people in Southern California, most of which is fluoridated at this time.
And unfortunately, we do not have another source to purchase the water besides the MWD.
We do not.
Thank you. Secretariat?
I'll move the item.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Raymond.
Yes.
Friedman.
Here.
Yes.
Thank you. Weaver.
Here. I mean, I...
Hages.
Here.
Najarian.
Yes. Next item, please.
Next item, we move on to oral communications.
This is the public announcement portion of oral communications. Each speaker will be afforded three minutes to make an announcement of public interest. First speaker is Officer Joe Allen, followed by Rio Ray.
Hello, Mr. Mayor, members of council and city staff. My name is Joe Allen. I'm a community lead officer for the City of Glendale in the north area of Glendale, representing Montrose and Locust Center area. Thank you for allowing me a few minutes here today. We're gonna tell you about a city event that's being held this Saturday, November 20, from 9:00 to 1:00 in the CVS parking lot at 2037 Verdugo Boulevard. We'll be conducting a community pharmaceutical drop-off in the parking lot for all the citizens to bring in any of their old or unused medication to help get it out of their homes and avoid any misuse or abuse that they may fall into at their house or by others taking it. This event's being sponsored by both the Glendale Police Department, the Glendale Fire Department, Public Works, and being sponsored in cooperation with CVS. Again, on Saturday from 9:00 to 1:00, we welcome anybody in the community to bring any old or unused pharmaceuticals to us, and we'll be happy to dispose of those through the Glendale Environmental Management Center that also accepts those at 780 Flower Street on Wednesdays and Saturdays from 9:00 to 1:00. But again, it'll be this Saturday from 9:00 to 1:00 at the CVS parking lot in Montrose. Thank you.
And there's no questions asked?
No questions asked. Drive-in. You don't even have to get out of your vehicle. We have some bins for proper disposal that the fire department is providing, and they can just drop it right into the bins as they drive through.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Rio Ray, followed by Joy Fenner.
I have with me tonight as well my amazing advisory board member, Sheldon Baker. As you guys know, the economy's been really rough, and Salvation Army is serving more people than ever before with less resources, and so we have started a kettle kickoff every year that we do when our red buckets go in front of stores for bellringers. That is how we give women and children shelter. That is how we feed needy families. That is how we give children alternatives to being a safe place and grow and prosper. And so those red kettles are gonna go out, but first we have a kettle kickoff breakfast this Friday at 7:00 a.m., goes to 8:30, and then we'll get you out of there. We wanted to invite every single person that's here, and anyone watching at home, we'd love to have you there as well. It should be a wonderful breakfast, and we have some free tickets for you guys if you're interested.
It's not a lunch, it's a breakfast, so... Because I know there is no such thing as a free lunch, but you do get tickets, and we really invite you to be there. It'll be a lot of fun, and it goes for an extremely good cause. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time, your prayers, and your compassion.
Okay. Joy? Followed by Mark Olson.
Hello, everyone. Good to see you. My name is Joy Foyer, and I'm a resident of Glendale and also the founder of a local arts organization called Art From the Ashes. You may recall, we had an exhibition this past June in conjunction with the Glendale Parks and Open Space Foundation, and that was to benefit Dikmaian Wilderness Park after the devastation, the station fire, and it was quite a success. And to that end, we are very grateful to be welcomed back to Glendale with the support of the Redevelopment Agency, and I'd like to particularly thank Phil Landsefame and Mark Berry for their support in just relaunching and having another exhibition. And so this upcoming exhibition, Artie's been kind enough to put up some images. It is called appropriately Inspire, and it opens this Saturday, November 20, and it features 44 artists and over 100 works of art. And the unique element of Inspire is we've been in... I founded the organization in 2007, and for the last three and a half years, these artists have supported all of our exhibitions for the communities that have been impacted by wildfire, and they've donated 100% of their works. For Inspire, we're going to have the majority of the proceeds go back to the artists to feed that artist community and that talent and generosity. And the interesting element about Inspire as well is that each artist will exhibit one work that is created from reclaimed firesite materials, and then the additional works that they showcase will allow them to represent their own creative diversity and spectrum by allowing them to choose their mediums. So I promise you a very diverse and energized show. Again, we open this Saturday, November 20. The opening reception is from 6:00 to 10:00 p.m. There's a suggested donation of $20, and that includes sips and bites provided by Bevmo, Granville Cafe, Auntie Em's, and Trader Joe's, who are bringing the whole community in. The gallery is located at 216 South Brand across from the Americana, so you can eat dinner, go shopping, come see art, and then start all over again and keep going. And once again, the gallery, if you were there before, and so many of you, thank you for your support last time in attending and purchasing art. The gallery has been once again redesigned using predominantly reclaimed materials, and for those of you that attended the previous exhibition in June, we really don't believe in doing anything twice the same, so it's revamped and revitalized. And again, you can go on our website, artfromtheashes.org, to see more of the art that you're getting a view of today, and for any further information, we hope to see you there.
Thank you very much.
Please.
Mark Olson, followed by Leon Meyer.
Honorable Mayor, City Council, Community, Mark Olson with Southern California Edison. Being good neighbors, we like to check in a couple times a year with the council. We'll let you know the face of Edison if you have any questions. We have no current issues. We are working with staff on franchise and some services that are on the border of Glendale and transferring those over, but other... Those will come forward at some point, but just letting you know that if you have any questions, we're always there to answer them, and thank you for the time.
Thank you. Leon Meyer.
Good evening, Mayor Najarian, members of the council and staff. My name is Leon Meyer. I'm here tonight on behalf of the Friends of the Glendale Library, and we're having a very interesting event tomorrow night, 7 o'clock at the Central Library, parking at the exchanges validated at the library for three hours, and the author is historian, scientist Eric Conway, who will be talking about Merchants of Doubt. Is that gonna be up on the board in a second? Merchants of Doubt, the subtitle is How a Handful of Scientists Obscure the Truth on Issues from Tobacco Smoke to Global Warning. Now, this book is co-authored by Eric Conway and Naomi Oreskes, and this was the best-received book at the UCLA Book Fair this past year, and it's quite a book. Science historian Eric Conway tells the story of how a loose-knit group of high-level scientists and scientific advisors with deep convictions, connections in politics and industry ran effective campaigns to mislead the public and deny well-established scientific knowledge over four decades. This is a controversial book in the sense that there's gonna be some people who don't agree with the conclusions and the analysis of the... These two authors. I urge everybody who has an interest in the environment to come and update yourself tomorrow night, and we challenge anybody who feels that we're off-base on this to come there, listen to the author, talk to him, ask questions, and then if you have an author to present to contradict what we think is a valid position, we'll be glad to entertain and bring them to the library as well. It's free. It's a very meaningful, important event, one of, I think, our most important event of the year so far. So that's tomorrow night, 7 o'clock, at the Glendale Central Auditorium. Thank you very much.
Well, I have a contrary position, Mr. Mayor. The graphic that you posted said it was Thursday, November 17, so can you clear up the date?
It's Wednesday. This event...
Wednesday, the 17?
Tomorrow night.
Okay, because I believe it said Thursday, the 17.
Well, thank you very much for clarifying that, because we... The news press did finally put this in the news press yesterday, I mean, today, and it'll be in tomorrow. It's Wednesday.
Wednesday.
Thank you very much.
Very good. Thank you. I don't have any other cards for this portion of oral communications, so this portion is closed. Let's move on to the next item.
Mr. Mayor and council, we now move on to the action items on the agenda. We're at 8:00 a.m. At 8:00 a.m., it's... It will be the City Treasurer regarding City Treasurer's quarterly investment review for the quarter ending September 30, 2010. At 8:00 a.m. is a motion to note and file report.
Thank you. Mr. Starbird.
Mr. Mayor, under no more circumstances, I go to Mr. Baruchy, but I might also encourage you to quickly note and file the report so that you can save yourself from the depressing report he's about to give.
I will make the motion.
One second.
I'm sure Ron's happy to answer any questions you might have.
That is true. Any questions?
No, but I think the folks at home would probably like to hear from you, Mr. Baruchy, just to give them a quick synopsis of the report.
I'm waiting for B.
Yeah, we have another item. I'll be here for another item, so the folks at home will get their fair share. I'm getting plenty of FaceTime tonight, but it's... Fine, let me just... Let me just quickly go over the numbers for the benefit of the folk in TV land. The city portfolio ended the first fiscal quarter at $400 million, down $48 million from the $448 million at the end of the last quarter in June. $25 million of that difference was the purse prepayment that was done in July. Interest earnings for the quarter fell to $1.58 million, down $340,000 from the $1.92 million earned during the previous quarter. The average rate of return for the quarter was 1.53%, 17 basis points lower than the 1.70 of the previous quarter. For those that are interested, the Local Agency Investment Fund, the State... For those that are interested, the Local Agency Investment Fund, the State Fund fell five basis points to average 0.51% for the quarter. Just quickly, looking at the market, you're right if you thought the recovery was moving slowly. The latest poll of 46 economists says that the economy will grow at a slower pace than previously thought. Projected growth has been revised downward to 2.6 for the remainder of 2010 and through 2011. Nagging high unemployment, weak consumer spending and stagnant wages continue to take their toll on the recovery. High ring will be painfully slow. What is particularly painful here is that they project that the unemployment rate at the end of 2011 will still be at or above 9.2. Not a particularly upbeat report. But if there are any questions?
I have a question.
Sure.
Mr. Baruchy, the indicated that 25 million was a prepayment of the PERS assessment. So is that later going to be refunded back into the reserves over the course of-
Now, let me comment on it. What we do is we participate in a program from the California Public Employees Retirement System where we receive a considerable discount if we pay what would normally be our contributions to PERS monthly. If you prepay it in advance, they give you a discount that's equivalent to about 4.5%, which is far greater than we would make on our money by keeping it in the bank in that way. And then we take essentially the savings from that each year and we put it into a future reserve to offset future increases in our PERS costs. So the way finance does is this actually still remains as an asset on our books of prepaid retirement and then each month it's amortized over the course of the year.
Okay. Questions? Okay. Is there a motion to?
It was moved and seconded.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Councilmembers, Raymond-
Yes.
Friedman, Quintero-
Yes.
Weaver-
Aye.
Mayor Najarian.
Yes. Item?
He is City Treasurer again regarding city's investment policy. At B1 is a resolution approving the investment policy for the City Treasurer investment of city funds.
Mr. Baruchy.
Yes, the City Treasurer's Office is requesting approval of a recommended change to the city's investment policy. The recommended change would allow the purchase of Single A or better-rated corporate securities as permitted by the California Government Code. Recent economic events have diminished the ability of the City Treasurer's Office to add corporate securities to the city's investment portfolio. Currently, the investment policy of the city permits the purchase of corporate securities that have credit ratings of AA or better. This policy served the city well until the financial meltdown two years ago. Meltdown and the resulting jobless recovery have hurt businesses of all sizes and many corporations continue to struggle today to regain profit margins. In these past two years, the rating agencies have lowered their ratings on many companies across the business landscape, including corporations with credit ratings of AA or better. Let's talk about the credit agencies for a second. If you can recall, at the time of the meltdown, the credit agencies came, came under a lot of criticism, a lot of heat with the Lehman Brothers. When Lehman Brothers went down in September of 2008, they were still AA rated. When AIG went down with their overextended position on credit default swaps, I believe they also were a AA rated security. Not exactly sure what the situation was, but the credit rating agencies came under attack with Washington Mutual and I believe IndyMac. And of course, we all recall the insurance companies that provide bond insurance to municipalities. Those were all AAA rated right up until the time that they had to file for a default and fold. I think what's happened with the meltdown and the very slow recession and the even slower recovery, I think they have, the credit agencies have tried to clean up their act. I'm not exactly saying that they're pushing back, but they are being super cautious and they are particularly hard or harsh on companies and corporations. And that, that impacts us. As a result of the actions of the past two years, the universe of corporate bond names rated AA or better has shrunk, directly diminishing our ability to add corporate securities to our portfolio. Our holdings of corporate paper has dropped to 5.6% of the portfolio, considerably under the 15% allocation permitted by city policy. As it is deemed beneficial to have corporate securities in our portfolio for diversification and yield enhancement, the City Treasurer recommends changing the city's investment policy to add more corporate bonds to our portfolio. This change would permit the purchase of Single A or better-rated corporate bonds as rated by a national rating agency. Total holdings of corporate bonds would continue to be limited to 15% of the city portfolio with no more than 5% in any one corporate name. This change puts the city investment policy closer to the government code of the state of California, which permits local agencies to invest 30% of their portfolio in corporate bonds rated Single A or better by a nationally recognized rating service. Let's talk about ratings for a second. And this is going to be rather brief because the last thing I want to do here is stand here at 7 o'clock at night and talk about rating categories. The two largest rating agencies, the best-known Moody's and Standard and Poor's, work on a series of grades, starting with AAA at the top, AAAs, Single As, and they move down into Triple Bs, Double Bs, Single Bs. To give you an idea, they keep continuing. There are Triple Cs, Double Cs, Cs and even Ds. We don't have to pay attention to the lower end of the scale. We're really talking junk bonds here. The first three categories, high-yield bonds. We've used, as they are. Right, right. They would never be addressed in the Glendale news press. The best quality grades would be the AAA. Your high-quality grades would be the AAAs and then your upper-medium quality grades are your Single As. The first three categories, in a nutshell, relate to quality. Beyond that, after your first three As and you get into the Triple Bs and the Double Bs, you're more concerned or the rating agencies focus more on risk. These companies are, are categorized as having moderate risk. They're speculative. They're a high credit risk. They're, they're judged to be of poor standing. They're highly speculative. I tell you, if in fact you can gleam or gather the differentiation between the different categories just from looking at their description and what I read to you is basically the Moody's reference points. Standard and Poor's uses similar but not the same. And so therefore you get this, this conglomerate, which is terribly confusing. As someone told me very young in my career, doing credit ratings is not a science, it's an art form. I would like to suggest that rather than retain that, remember, but the most important thing to remember from that is that all three A categories, the AAA, the AA and the Single A, reference high-quality securities. I would prefer to kind of look at a list that I made up in the last several weeks. I've been looking at how I would identify Single A or characterize Single A securities. And probably the best way is to identify Single A securities rated by either one or two of the agencies that, that right now I cannot purchase and put into the city portfolio. These are some of the company names. McDonald's, we all know, fast food, identify fast food with McDonald's. Disney, Disney's a corporate neighbor of ours. They're headquartered in, in Burbank and of course they have a large presence here in Glendale, but not in the city's portfolio. You think of computers, IBM immediately comes to mind. IBM is not thought of for our city portfolio. Coca-Cola, I was going to say it's the most popular drink in the United States. It's probably the most popular drink in the world and has been for over 100 years. Coca-Cola is not in our portfolio, will not be today. Caterpillar, maker of farm equipment, heavy-duty construction equipment, road building equipment. DuPont Chemicals, Dell Computers when you think PCs. Intel, when you think computer chips. Hewlett Packard for computers and electronics. PepsiCo, which is the corporate umbrella company for Pepsi-Cola as well as for, I think it's Frito-Lay and food snacks. No snacks in our city portfolio. John Deere, Amazon, eBay, Boeing, and one that we used to buy, but we can't buy anymore, Wells Fargo Bank. Our position is conservative. We've been shut off from US companies that are household names. I'd like the opportunity to put some of these names into our city portfolio. Remember that we are not buying securities or, or stocks. We're not holding equity position. It's important for the people in our audience, our TV audience particularly, to remember what we're doing is buying debt. We're buying bonds, which has a life of three to four or five years. And what we're particularly looking at, will that company, will that corporation, will that McDonald's, will that Disney, will that Caterpillar, Coca-Cola, Hewlett Packard or PepsiCo, will these companies be around in, at maturity date to pay us back our principal and our interest? A question that I'm anticipating is how did we get here? How did we decide on having the portfolio focus on a corporate policy at AAAs and Triple As? When I came into the city in 1999, one of the first things I did was take it to council. And as we were putting together my notes, our notes, my investment committee said, you know, this is a very conservative, very, very, very conservative city. It's a very conservative council. At that time, I thought, good to see Sheldon, Sheldon was here. I think the mayor at that time was Ginger. Dave was on it, had a couple other members, if I recall, Gus and I think Rafi.
Ben Givens.
No, I think they had already, she and Larry had already left. But in any event, the approach was why don't we start slowly with baby steps? And so rather than turn around and go, jump right in with the, the suggested or what is permitted or allowed by the government code, going in with Single As, all right, we'll start off slowly with AAAs and Triple As, the cream of the cream, cream of the crop, top of the, top of the sundae. And where the government code permits holding corporates in your portfolio up to 30%, we'll take a step back and just hold it at 15% and let's see where that takes us. And at some point in time, we'll come back. Successful or if we need to change, we'll come back and we'll make adjustments. Well, that position, as I said earlier, was, worked quite well for a number of years until the financial meltdown. With the financial meltdown, with the situation that we've experienced the last couple of years, we just don't see a lot of AAA corporate paper around. There wasn't many to begin with when we started this 10 or 11 years ago. There were probably 10 to 12 corporate, corporate clients or AAA corporate names in the United States. There's half of them left and those probably would be Exxon, Exxon Mobil, Microsoft is one and ADP, I think is one. And Johnson &amp; Johnson, if I'm not mistaken. And the AAAs are, they're few and far in between and primarily on the financial side is where they were at. There's just a few of those remaining. Remember during the financial meltdown, the crisis started in the banking arena with financials and it was the banking community that took the hit, got hurt the most, had the bailout, the TARP funds from, from the government. Well, as I said, our policy on corporates has served us well. Since then, we've got, we've had an extremely low interest rate picture with no relief in sight. And at this point in time, I think it would be appropriate for us to make a change. We can do what we should do. At times like this, we should be doing everything we can to generate or squeeze out revenue to help the city budget. Lord knows, I am no risk taker. I think what we're looking for here is to continue adding to diversification of the portfolio. Extending, expanding our corporates will provide us flexibility. We need to keep our options open. Making this little change, and remember what we're doing is simply dropping one little, little A from the policy. From a AA to a Single A, we're losing one article. An extremely conservative portfolio becomes just a very conservative portfolio. Mr. Mayor, council members, I welcome your questions.
Starbird.
Mr. Baruchy, it might be, might be helpful-
Yes.
-to note some of the cities in our area who utilize a single-
Yeah, thank you for that question. And I thought about that because you did mention that yesterday. The city of Los Angeles, the city of Riverside, and we're talking about cities that have comparable portfolios or larger. Burbank and Pasadena all abide by what is called for in the government code, which means buying Single A or better. You could buy Single As, you could buy AAAs, you could buy Triple As. They also abide by the, 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 the position of having as much as 30% of your portfolio in corporates. A better way of answering that though, is that I don't know within the state of California a municipality that has a portfolio our size or larger that, that is as restrictive as we. There are portfolios that are smaller than ours. The city of Modesto actually called our office and asked what our policy was and they liked it and they, they applied it towards theirs. But I don't know a larger city that works with the, with the restrictions that we put on ourselves.
Mr. Quintero.
Yeah, I agree with your analysis, Mr. Baruchy. Some of the great American corporations have A ratings, so I think it's entirely appropriate and it'll only be a maximum of 15%. That's correct. City portfolio. I'm prepared to make the motion whenever. Question's over.
I'll second it whenever.
Let me ask a few questions of Mr. Baruchy. What sort of difference in yields would we expect going from a AA to a Single A?
We're not going to get rich, not in this low-rate environment. And the reason for that is because of the compression of the rates.
So there is greater risk though, from, going from AA to Single A?
Well, let me just tell you, to get back to the, the first answer as far as what the spread is. PepsiCo put out, PepsiCo put out three-year paper and that was 35 basis better than the Treasury. Everything's geared to the Treasury, our Treasury yield curve. eBay went out with three-year paper within the last two months and they also, that was at 42 basis points better than, than the three-year Treasury. As far as risk goes, again, the risk that we're looking at here isn't in the stock market, it's in the bond market. And we're looking at companies that, that would, these are ones that I, that I like. These are ones that I would consider. This change would give me the opportunity to look at these. The chances of Disney, well, let's not look at Disney- The chances of Disney, well, let's not look at Disney. The chance, the chances of McDonald's not being around in three to four years is kind of, I would take that, that, that risk.
That's a risk.
Well, let me ask you this. What was GM, what was GM's bonds rated at right before they went bankrupt? Weren't they A also?
I don't believe so. No, I don't believe so. Just because they're rated A doesn't necessarily mean that, that I would consider them. I would not have bought GM. I didn't know what Kirk Corian was doing when he turned around and bought them at $32 a share. That's, that's the stock. Now, GM got, got into trouble not only, not only with, with, with selling cars, but financing cars. It was their finance company that, that really was a big, big weight around their, an albatross around their neck, like in mixed metaphors.
Countrywide, what was Countrywide at? Were they selling corporate bonds?
Yes.
What were they rated before?
I have no idea.
I mean, my point is, my point is that the, the increase in yield that we're getting is very minute when you compare the, the potential risk of, I mean, we're not through this, you know, we're not through the woods yet. We also have a, a new, a new House of Congress that are, a new party in control of the House of Congress that I think are going to be far less inclined to offer any bailout money should any industries, strong industries, fast-food industries, or internet industries start to stumble. And I'm just matching the risk versus the
I understand.
Benefit.
Right. I'll tell you
You said it's compressed, and, and I'm not sure we're gaining, I don't think the risk is compressed. I think that, as you said, the yields are compressed, but I still think there's a difference in that double A to single A. That's just my
Well, let me just tell you, let me just tell you. I mean, of all the examples that you raised, I wouldn't buy any of those. I'm not, I'm not a big keen fan of investing in the American auto industry right now. Sorry to say that. On a personal basis, I have no desire to, to, to look at, or even as a, the corporate paper, GM is going with their IPO. I would have no interest in that. I have no interest in the financials when we're talking about the investment brokers. I mean, I think the risk is still there, whether it's a Credit Suisse, a UBS, or Goldman Sachs. I'm very concerned about that industry. I come from that industry. I know it. There are a few names there that I still like that I think are going to survive. You look at the, the large, a company that used to be triple A that is no longer triple The General Electric, they had their ratings pulled on them, found from a triple A to a double A because of their finance company, General Electric Credit Corp. I like them. They're strong enough, they will, they will survive. But they're a risk. That, that, I agree with you. There are companies that you just stay away with no matter what their rating happens to be, because, because they're in a risky environment.
But as we go down to the, giving you the authority to go to buy the single A bonds,
Uh huh.
You're not going to come to council and say, hey, guys, I need a quick answer. I'm going to buy this, this corporate bond.
Uh huh.
It's all on you now.
That's right. And I'm ready, I am ready for the challenge, Mr. Najarian. That's why I'm in this spot.
Well, I don't know if we've ever put you in the big leagues yet, Mr. Baruch. We've been very limited in where we've given you that authority. I mean, it's been all very safe, double A, as you said, ultra-high, high-security now. I mean, I don't know if you have the resources, I don't know if you have the staff, and, you know, you're picking As, there are good As and there are bad As.
Well, I'm going to tell you something, Mr. Najarian. You know, we did have that financial meltdown. You know, there were a lot of, a lot of communities that got stung, that lost money and had Lehman Brothers. Nothing wrong with Lehman Brothers as long as they didn't go broke. They went broke. And they went broke, and then bankrupt, and they were a double A. Did we have any of that paper? It was a double A. We could have bought it. Why didn't we have it? I didn't like the company, I didn't like the industry. We didn't get stung with, we didn't get stung with IndyMac, didn't get stung with AIG, and I liked AIG before, but, but not recently. So therefore, I've been following particularly the financials. We're, again, talking about the financials. So I, I take my track record in even those that we did buy, and that we did hold in our portfolio, like Bank of America, GE, I did worry about those. I also had a, an investment bank that I was particularly concerned about. One of the reasons I stayed on is that I was worried about who would come in without any experience at all, and wouldn't know how to handle it. I think we worked our way out of that situation quite well.
Mr. Starbuck.
Your earlier question, in July of 2007, General Motors' bonds had a B rating. GMAC, their financial arm, had a double B rating.
I'm sorry, Jim, what?
General Motors in July of 2007 had a B rating on their bonds, by Standard &amp; Poor's.
Yeah, they, that was bad paper. Well, that's history. Some people follow this and some don't. I do follow this. I, I can do this. I think I've demonstrated that I can do this. I think it would be good for the city to do this.
How much does 15% of our portfolio amount to?
Probably
Roughly $60 million.
60,000, uh, 60,000.
Roughly $60 million.
60 million. Right now, what do we have? 22, and dwindling.
Because there aren't enough double A companies to invest in.
Yeah, yeah. Most of the double As that are remaining are, are financial companies, banks, investment houses, insurance companies.
In a best-case scenario, and we've got an extra $10 million to move, let's say, from a double A yield to what would be a, a single A yield? I know it's, I mean, if you do an approximation, I mean, what kind of money are we talking about annually with that extra yield? Assuming we can invest that extra $10 million and move, assuming we had $15 million in the, in the double A, and we're going to put, let's say, $10 million of it into single A, what sort of yield are we talking about? I mean, is it a significant money, or is it?
Uh, let's see, 10 basis points on, I don't know, 20 million, Jim? Did you capture?
10,000 on 10, it's $10,000 per 10 million on 100 basis points. On one, on one, yeah, on a, on 100 basis points. But you said 10 basis points?
Yeah, 10 basis points.
10 basis points, about $10,000 on $10 million.
Annually?
Yeah. That's 1/10 of 1%, right, Mr. Baruch?
So we'd get 10,000 more if, if we moved that $10 million into the single A bond, $10,000 annually? Or is that, am I saying that correct?
Well, the, I think, I think the comparison you want to make is, what Mr. Baruch is making on, for example, CDs and Treasury bills right now, because he wouldn't be moving something from double A into, into single A. It's, it's spreading our portfolio among the single A investments that he can't avail himself of now. He has money and he has up to 15% he can invest in double A, but there aren't enough of those companies he's comfortable with to put all of those eggs in one basket. So he's about 5% currently, Mr. Baruch?
Yeah.
I think, about 5%?
What, 5%?
Yeah, so he hasn't, so he hasn't used the 15%. This affords him the opportunity to move things out of what now are very low-earning, call them savings accounts, CDs, Treasury bills, into potentially single A. So you may be getting more than 10 basis points
Well, that's a very good point. And what we, what we have, as you recall, we have $150 million in our local agency investment fund at basically 50 basis points. So we would, the difference, the real difference, rather than answering your direct question, the difference between a, a double A and a single A, whereas there's 10, 10 basis points or so, it's probably more, oh, it's hard to say, because you'd look at the, at the typical, at what is the typical maturity? At, at, at three years, it could be, it could be 1 and 1/4. At four years, it could be 1 and 1/2. At five, it could be 2 something. So the difference between that and the 50 basis points, now you're talking about some money. I mean, that's, that's the trade-off. We've been waiting, we've been parking money in the local agency investment fund, waiting for an opportunity for rates to increase. They just haven't increased.
I mean, are you saying that there's single A corporate bonds out there you're more comfortable with than double A corporate bonds?
I didn't say that. I can't find double A corporate bonds. That's
What do you mean you can't find? I don't understand that.
Most of, most of those that I see, that
They're not available? They're not
They're financials. I, I don't feel comf, just because it's a double A rated company doesn't mean that I have interest in it.
Well, that's what I'm saying. Are there, I mean, here's my question.
Yeah.
Are there single A corporate bonds out there?
Yeah.
This is an important question.
Yeah.
Well, he was elect by the people. He has a beautiful track record, Mr. Mayor, over, since 99. He's done fabulous, better than the industry as a whole. So you have to put your trust in
I appreciate that comment, but what I don't appreciate is your heavy sigh, Mr. Weaver.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Coming on for 10 minutes now, I, what's the point?
Well, let's get back to the, the point that you're trying to, maybe I had misunderstanding.
We're not fully subscribed to our 15% currently
Correct.
With the double A bonds.
Or, and triple A bonds, right.
And triple A.
Right.
But what you're saying is that there are single A bonds out there
Yes.
That you feel more comfortable with than
There's single, there's single A bonds out there he's more comfortable with than some of the triple As he has available to him.
That was my question.
Yes.
Then, yes, I am.
Okay. I mean, when we started that out, you said, well, why would you say that? I have a speaker, Mike Mohill. Let's go to Mr. Mohill.
Thank you, Mayor Najarian, council members. Mike Mohill, long-term resident. When I first came in here, our city treasurer was talking, and I'm taking notes. If you, if you recall, I came here about three years ago, and I remember the first thing the treasurer says is that the recession was over. Never forgot that one. And I, and I called him on it. Night, I must give our treasurer kudos. Much better presentation, in my opinion, humble opinion. However, as he was talking about the risk factor, before you start talking about General Motors, Mr. Mayor, I put down in my little notes to myself, I put down companies like General Motors, Chrysler, IndyMac, TV Guide, where's that, Mirror Newspaper, Countrywide, Shopping Bag Food Markets, Circuit City, Bullock's Department Store, Blockbuster, which is MGM Studios, Broadway Department Store, Whitefront, Enron. I mean, these are all companies that one time, everybody was buying them. So just because they're good today, doesn't mean they're going to be good tomorrow. I mean, any investment person will tell you that past performance is no indicator of future. I mean, I'm going through the same thing our treasurer's doing, because I have to make some investments too, because I don't have a pension. So I have to make sure that my few dollars I do have, I put in some good stocks and bonds, and commodities maybe. So I'm not here to pass judgment on our city treasurer. I actually think he's doing a pretty good job this year, presenting some good stuff. And he has a pretty good track record. So from the people in the, in the peanut gallery here, we'd like to say, thank you, Mr. City Treasurer.
Let's keep down the applause, Mr. Baruch. Mr. Drayman.
Can I see a show of hands in the audience for the people that Mr. Mohill is speaking for tonight? Golly, no hands went up. Well
Scared them all away?
Possibly. By the way, Mr. Baruch, I just want to come to your defense on one particular issue in particular, especially, because I've, I've heard your comments characterized as being that the recession was over. You never said that. In fact, you talked about experts and academics who were predicting, who were stating that the recession was over. But I just wanted to, to take that off your plate, because I've heard that from the same source several times now. So I just wanted to put that out there, Mr. Mayor. And by the way, let the record show, I did not sigh once.
You did not. You did not.
He was speaking of me.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not appreciating this, the power of this microphone. It, it's very difficult to cover sins here. So I apologize to you, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, no, I'm not blaming, no, it wasn't
But I'm blaming the microphone.
No, you were okay, Mr. And before we, before we take the roll, I just want to say that I do think you're doing a great job. My only, my only qualm is that I don't believe that the, the marginal increase in yield that we would get by going to a, a single A is, is worth the marginal risk that's involved.
I understand.
Let's take roll call, please.
Well, I'll, I'll move the item.
I second it.
Item was moved and seconded.
It was moved and seconded.
Councilmembers Drayman?
Yes.
Friedman?
Quintero?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Aaron Najarian?
No. And that was the, the, is this the amended resolution or the, okay.
I ask one question.
Yes.
Those single As
Yes.
When the economy turns, might some of those single As go to double As?
Oh, absolutely. Oh, absolutely. I, as, as I tried to draw some type of line here, is that the, I, I think they're being held back because the credit rating agencies are playing it safe. They don't want to be criticized.
They're considered
Yes, so they're suppressing.
Thank you.
Mr., as long as we're, another thing about some of the companies that you mentioned, including Caterpillar, is the enormous amount of cash that they have in their balance sheets. As you know, Caterpillar just bought Busiris, a huge coal mining company. So Coca-Cola, PepsiCo, McDonald's, Caterpillar, like you've mentioned, I'm sure they're going to be around three to five years ago. And to drag out General Motors, and to drag out whoever, that has no bearing on your decisions.
Well, some of these companies actually have been prospering during these past two years. McDonald's, for example, is, is doing gangbusters, not only in the United States but overseas. Anyhow, thank you, gentlemen.
Our reason is the economy. Next item, please.
Next item at HC is Director of Community Services and Parks regarding lights at Verdugo Park. At C1 is a resolution dispensing with competitive bidding and authorizing city manager to execute a contract with Electro Construction Corporation for a total not to exceed contract amount of $99,243, including contingency to install a new lighting system, including new light standards, concrete foundations, underground conduits, and conductors. At C2 is a resolution appropriating $100,000 to provide funds for the installations.
Mr. Starbuck.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this is a problem we've faced before with sports field lighting. We found that the general lighting in Verdugo Park suffers from the same deterioration. Metal poles placed directly in the ground with corrosion, and electrical systems that frankly have now given out. We can't utilize the lighting in the park, and so that creates a hazardous situation. We're asking for emergency approval to waive competitive bidding and work with Electro Construction Company for replacement of the general lighting in Verdugo Park, as outlined in the staff report, and to transfer funds from the Glorietta Lighting Project into this account to cover the costs.
Our system's been in place, what, 50-some years?
Oh, a long time.
I think it reports
Probably as long as Mr. Morello's been with the park system.
50-plus. And some of the wiring underground has been just laid underground.
Yeah. Again, in those days, they placed the light standards right in the ground, which just led to corrosion, so.
Unbelievable. You don't want to discuss
But that, we have a resolution dispensing with competitive bid, and a resolution appropriating or trans, allow, authorizing the transfer and the appropriation of funds.
Would you like a motion?
Okay, Mr. Weaver.
HC 1 and 2?
HC can be taken together. Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Drayman?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Aaron Najarian?
Yes. Next item.
One last question. When is the completion date, so the public knows, that there be light in the park? Harry?
Or just completion date?
Estimate.
Pardon me, completion date?
So the public knows.
For the lighting?
Completion date is anticipated in January. The, one of the issues is the contractor has to get started, started right away, because the manufacturing of the light standards will take six to eight weeks. So we want to get a motion.
Thanks, Jess.
Does Jess do lighting now, too?
Does Jess, again
Does Jess, again, is part of the-
I'm confused with this reorganization.
I mean, this is Mayor, Department of Community Services and Parks, of which Mr. Duran is Assistant Director.
And we're not, we're not using CDBG funds on this one.
No, they're not. We know Jess is a CDBG guy, but he's also over parks as well.
Okay.
Many hats.
And doing a great job.
Let's move on to the public hearings.
At-
At nine.
Nine. Under hearings at nine is Director of Community Planning regarding Glendale Register of Historic Resources, listings, and Mills Act contract for a property at 1770 Grandview Avenue. 9A1 is a resolution designating the property as a historic resource and authorizing Mills Act contract.
Thank you. Mr. Starbuck.
Mr. Higani.
I'm going to-
I'm sorry, once again, my microphone is off. So, Jay, introduce yourself. My mic was off.
And I will open the public hearing.
Okay. And I'm Jay Platt with the Community Planning Department, Preservation Planner for the city. This is the first of two Glendale Register nominations and Mills Act applications we have this evening for council's consideration. And we're looking at a house in the Cumberland Heights neighborhood, 1770 Grandview Avenue. It is definitely one of the more dramatic houses in Glendale, and has a lot of historic residents in the city. The owner is applying for both the Mills Act and for the Glendale Register, and the Historic Preservation Commission has voted unanimously to recommend that the council grant both of those requests. The house is recommended to be called the Jensen House, after Robert Jensen, who was the son of Henry Jensen, who was the founder of the Jensen's entertainment empire, basically, which had a strong presence in the early history of Glendale. We're looking at a house that was built for Robert Jensen. We don't know the architect, but we can tell that it was someone who had really, was well-versed in a lot of the historic styles. So, we have a Spanish colonial revival-style house with Moorish elements, especially pulled out when you look at the central bay with the three stories, and then the tall, skinny minaret poking up on the side, something we don't see in Glendale very often. The house is also in a very interesting location, right next to the entrance to Bran Park. So, Leslie Bran's El Miradero Gate was located here much earlier than the house, when the house was built. And here we see a shot of the lot in the lower right, when it was orange fields, and Leslie Bran's airfield was to the left, and of course, the Bran Mansion up at the top of the picture. The Jensen family was very interesting in terms of the way they thought about entertainment in the early years of Hollywood and the early development of the city. They built one of the first movie theaters in Glendale, the Palace Grand Theater in 1920. I'm sorry, in 1914, but by 1920, it had been eclipsed already, and there was a more popular theater down the street. So, the Jensen's didn't, you know, waste a second. They just said, "Okay, we're going to do something now. We're going to open up an entertainment center," which turned into the lower-right photograph, the Palace Grand Shops, which was kind of an entertainment mall of its day. It would have shops at the ground floor, and then down in the basement, there was a billiard hall, and a bowling alley, and a barber shop. So, it's kind of a multi-function building. The Jensen's also owned Jensen's Recreation Center in Echo Park, which has that amazing sign if you drive down Sunset Boulevard, the Raymond Theater in Pasadena, and several other buildings. So, Robert Jensen did not build these buildings, but he was the manager for Glendale, and he was kind of the businessman in Glendale. And you read a lot of newspaper accounts from the LA Times and the news press about his efforts in the city. And just to give you some connection to the building, this was the site of the Egyptian Village Cafe, one of the great losses in Glendale architectural history, and a lot of people still lament this loss, and it was attributed to the Jensen's. So, they built this. Here are a couple of views of the house. The picture at the upper left shows this historic portion of the house that was built in 1925, and in 1995, a subsequent owner, but not the current owner, built an addition next to the portcachere that you see in the lower right. And they kept the Spanish Revival style, and in many ways, the addition is complementary to the house. But the owner at that time also put a lot of extra adornment on the house. So, you can see the white columns in the upper picture, lots of urns and kind of gigos, we call them officially. But several changes were added to this historic house, as well as the addition that was made. Here's a close-up view of the minaret turret structure, as well as the front entry door, and then some other views of the house. The garage is in remarkably original condition. We don't see a lot of kind of secondary buildings like that. And then I'm especially intrigued by the lower-right picture, which has kind of an almost pueblo appearance, and that's part of the original house and the original rear facade. So, this house is really designed all the way around in very interesting ways. The commission, when they considered this house, focused a bit on some of what I was calling the gigos, and went back and forth on how they felt about these and how they related to the historic architecture, and ultimately came up with the idea that they felt that this arch over the driveway, which dates to the 1995 changes, was really the biggest problem that they had with this. And in keeping with our current Mills Act policy, the proposal was to recommend approval to the council for the Mills Act with the condition that this arch be removed, and that's something that we would write into the Mills Act contract, so we'd have some leverage if that weren't to happen. In going through the Glendale Register criteria, the commission found that this house met three of the seven criteria, and we also don't see that very often. It met the criterion for associations with significant people for the association with Robert Jensen, the architecture criterion, both as one of the best types in the neighborhood. It's just such an interesting structure. We don't, it's not your standard Spanish colonial revival that we have a lot of in Northwest Glendale, and also felt that it had an outstanding architectural design, details, and materials. And finally, it found that the house met criterion E, because it's in a unique location. It's really a neighborhood icon when you're going up to Bran Park. It's one of the unmissable single-family houses that we have in Glendale. And you should also know that in 19, in 2004, when the Cumberland Heights area was surveyed, this house was identified as potentially eligible for the National Register, the California Register, as well as the Glendale Register. And then when we did a survey update, or I'm sorry, it wasn't a survey update, but in October, the commission took under consideration a historic district for North Cumberland Heights, a new historic district that is now moving through our designation process. And in the previous survey, it was found that this would be a contributor to a potential historic district. Available, if you have any questions?
I do have a speaker. Rubiko Vanessien.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, honorable members of the council staff. My name is Rubiko Vanessien. My wife, Carmen, and I, we've lived in city of Glendale for over 25 years. My family members have lived in Glendale over close to 35 years. We've owned the house for close to 10 years. We bought it. It was in a very poor condition. We went through restoration. I happen to have a little bit experience in real estate, development, construction. So, we restored it, renovated it, furnished it, and we've opened our house to many neighborhood, community, charitable, political events. And as Mr. Platt said, the house has, is one of the very few homes that has qualified under several conditions criterias, especially the criteria, which is in the unique house, in a unique location, very visible. The Historic Preservation Commission recommended it with two conditions, and we're okay with one of the conditions. We're not comfortable with one of the conditions. They asked the arch to be removed. We're okay with that. And I spoke on that at the Historic Preservation Commission. The one condition that we're not prepared to move forward with is the Jensen House, the name. It seems that there's a policy at the department. You either go with the address, or they look back and whoever constructed the house. We've, we've lived in the community. We've opened our house to many events for charitable. My wife and I, we've served on many organizations, boards, and commissions, and, or in the community. And we continue, have done that, and we continue to do that. I passed around the book that shows a picture of the book, house, from about 10 years ago. This is a book of collection of homes that qualifies one-of-a-kind in the nation of homes with very unique architecture. And the house is mentioned in there as having very few special features. Under criteria E, we don't have to even comply with any conditions. However, we're willing to comply with the condition to remove the arch. But we request that the council overturn the HPC's decision, and instead of the Jen- house to be called the Jensen House, to be called Casa de Ovanesian. We, my wife and I, we've for at least 10 years, we've lived, as I said, 25 years in the community, been working tirelessly in the community, giving back, serving on many boards and commissions. As I said, we will continue to do that. And again, our house has been open. No other property owner that their house has been designated has opened their house for events, serving, helping the community in very different fashions. So, my request is, we're okay with condition one, that the HPC imposed removing the arch. We request that the name Jensen House to, not to be assigned to the property, and we get a Casa de Ovanesian if possible, since we've contributed in the community in many different facets, and we'll continue to do so. If that is not acceptable, then we'd like to withdraw our nomination for the historic resource designation. Thank you. I'm available to answer any questions.
Thank you. I don't have any other cards, but let me ask a question, Mr. Higani or Mr. Platt. What's, what's in a name? I mean, does it-
A rose by any-
I mean, is the name something that the council would decide on, or is that something that's an informal moniker? What is the-
We have a policy at HPC to name houses when we have a significant person associated with it, and that's brought out in the nomination. The commission considers whether this person really has contributed to the history of Glendale and to the development of the community over the years, and that determination is made at the meeting. My staff recommendation is consistent with that. When we, when we feel something's significant under criterion C, in general, that person's name would be associated with the house. It's not necessarily the first person who lived in or who built the house. It could be a subsequent owner, as we have several examples of, but in this case, it is the person who built the house.
But, but on this house, as I read the report, it's not, doesn't qualify only under criteria C, but also under D for the architecture, and E for the location, the situs of the house?
Yeah. In general, when we don't have an association with a significant person, we just use the street address as the reference point for the house. So, that's what would be on the plaque, when the plaque goes up and in all the city records.
Can, can a house be named, I mean, in terms of person of general interest, they don't have to be, I mean, they can be infamous people, too, couldn't they?
It's quite possible.
People that perhaps-
Jesse James.
Jesse, John Wilkes Booth of Glendale.
People that, you know, are active in politics, and perhaps controversial in their own right in terms of issues and activities.
It's, I don't think we have that situation currently, but it's possible.
Oh.
You mean like El Tovar?
Big things, though.
Let's move on, and I have to be, the fact that there was an addition made, and in some of these homes, I mean, we really scrutinize modifications that are made, and whether that throws them out of the running. But in this particular analysis, the-
Yeah. In the commission's discussion, if this was only qualifying under the architecture criterion and didn't have the significant person or the location, it would be more of a questionable nomination. But I think even given that, the strength of the base architecture of the house is really strong and really unique, something we don't see really in many other parts of Glendale. And so, the commission took that under consideration. I can't say what would have happened if it was, if it didn't meet the other two criteria.
Okay. Thank you. And Margaret, did you want to speak on this item?
I do.
Did I close the public hearing yet, or did I leave it open?
We opened it.
I don't recall.
We opened it, if you did.
Thank you. Okay, I'm just-
Whatever.
No, no, I don't, because I was, I've been deep in thought. This house has given me a lot of issue. I mean, I've looked at it, and I've tried to, you know, Mr. Ovanesian is well-known throughout the city, and as of recent years, and I've, when I first saw this house, I said, "Hell, no. I'm not going to give, give historic designation to it." But it's not about the person, it's about the house. And since it's about the house, you know, I think I'm, I have to be bigger than that. And I'm even inclined to, to let it be called Casa de Ovanesian, if you want to know where I'm at. Everyone at home? Darlene, if you're watching?
At Casa Njerian, you mean?
At Casa Njerian. Sometimes you have to take a broader sense of, of, of the issues.
Am I going to be alone?
I do-
I'm going to be-
Margaret, just, I'd like to go to the last speaker that I have, and that's Margaret Hammond. Yes, Margaret?
My name is Margaret Hammond. I've lived in this city for 50 years. I was involved, I've been involved with the Glendale Historical Society for over 30 years. And as far as I can remember, any time that we were trying to get designations for historic homes or for historic sites, it was always that it had to be a famous person or a person of notable Glendale historic ability, worth, or whatever you want to call it, had to be involved in it. I mean, for instance, like the Casa Verdugo is a Casa Verdugo, and so forth. And the homes that have all been nominated have always been either the person that was famous, or that was the architect, or whatever. And I don't understand why we would change that format. As far as I understand, have, my understanding is that it definitely, the person, or that the house must have a designation connected to a famous person, architect, whatever event. So, I do not understand why we, why this format should be changed in any way. I think that would leave the whole, set a precedent, and set off a whole different idea of why you have your house designated as a historic house. For instance, Donald Biggs, whom you all know as the Fire Chief of Glendale, was born in my house, and his grandmother owned it, and he was born in my house. So, therefore, can I come along and say, "I want my house, you know, to be designated as a historic home"? But I'd like it to be the Hammond residence, rather than the person that was of significance in the community. Now, that's only my opinion, but I think as far as I know, that that was the understanding.
Bad example, Margaret.
Pardon?
Bad example. More people know you than, than former Chief Biggs.
No. No.
Oh, yes, they do.
Donald Biggs was around for-
Oh, yes, they do. You're Margaret.
So, am I infamous?
Don't even have to call it the Hammond house. You can just call it the Margaret house.
Am I like Jesse James sort of thing? That's why the house, but at any rate, okay. I'm just saying my opinion, and I feel that's, that I, you know, have a reason to come up and speak about this. Now, the Jensen, the Egyptian Cafe, I mean, yeah, the Egyptian Cafe we lost, that was a beautiful building. Those people and, and how involved they were in the community for probably, what, 75 years, maybe longer. So, anyway, that's my opinion. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Was there another card submitted?
The submitter changed his mind.
Thank you. I will close the public hearing, then, in case anyone gets any urges to speak. Let me go to my colleagues. Anyone wishing to comment. Mr. Weaver?
Yeah, question. The resolution we have doesn't have anything in there about removing the arch, or whatever. I mean, it's in the staff report, talks about that and other things. But-
Am I looking at the resolution wrong?
I can ask Mr. Platt to explain how, when, when the conditions, such as the one that was mentioned, are added, how we deal with them in the Mills Act contract, and that was the intention. However, the council always has the option of adding that condition to the resolution if used.
Yeah. At the time of the hearing, the commission discussed many possible conditions, and really went back and forth a lot, thinking about some of the additions that came in 1995, ultimately settling- Ultimately settling on the arch is probably the most problematic for them. And the way we do this is we write a Mills Act contract with an addendum that specifically describes the work that must be performed and then establishes a date for that to be performed. And we usually do that in conjunction with the owner to make sure that the date is realistic based on the scope of the work. In the last year, we've had a number of Mills Act applications with these conditions and we, you know, the date will change. We've had some that are two to three years, some that we expect to be done within the first year of the contract.
Then we'd be modifying the resolution to say, including recommendations.
The council was provided with alternate resolutions in case you were concerned about some of the other things that the commission had not voted on in terms of creating the condition.
Okay, but in here you're saying staff recommends that the commission condition removal of various ornamental features noted in the finding above as part of its recommendation to the council. And it goes on to more than just that. Freestanding columns, various finials, if that's how you say it, and urns on the fence and in the front garden and several statues and decorations applied directly to the facade. But what we're seeing here, the only condition you're now saying is the removal of the arch and moving in.
That was the commission's decision. I wanted the council to know that they had talked about other things, but that they came to the conclusion that the arch was what they were most concerned.
We want more than.
If, if I may explain this, staff originally recommended the removal of more than just the arch. And after some discussion, the commission only required the removal of the arch. However, if staff, I think, has maintained some level of position about maybe other, we, we have some concerns about a couple of other features that if you would like to revisit those, I think Jay is prepared to talk about those.
Mr. Garcia.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Councilmember Weaver, I think so that the record is clear, the council should specifically delineate which conditions it wants, even the one related to the, to the arch, to specifically say, we want this done and this is what we want. So that can be put into the resolution and it's clear for both the city and the property owner.
I'd like more clarity with.
Right.
But they haven't looked at the pictures. I can't, I don't know what you're talking about in any of them. I know the arch. But what are the other things?
I could go back to the.
Just for purposes of knowing.
Yeah, let's see what they, they are so we can.
Okay, the, the paired columns on either side of this, this arched window are from the 1995 alterations. This is something that staff felt should be removed from the house. The commission did not vote to have these removed. The most, pretty much all of these urns that are on freestanding elements, and let me get back to the picture of the gate.
About that.
Yeah, sorry about that. That's already removed. Um, the, these kind of round finials, these kind of urns on top of the gate, there was some concern that that does kind of create a visual clutter when you really want the house to be the thing that shines on a site like this. The fence was installed with a permit and originally it was a much, much less ornate fence. And then in 1995, it was altered. And then coming around to the addition, the addition has, these are original features to the addition, and in some ways, I felt like this could be a situation where we're like Solomon and we treat the historic house differently than we treat the addition. So I wouldn't necessarily say that these pieces of the addition would need to come away because they're part of the addition. And in, in part, I think that because when you look at the proportions of the addition and you see how tall it is and how low this window head is here, if these kind of white elements were to disappear, it would be a very strangely proportioned kind of streetscape feature.
But they actually duplicate.
So, so what we're really talking about are the, are these finials specifically? The commission didn't address these urns, which are kind of a decorative garden feature, and that would be something the council could consider separately, but the focus was really on, on, on these, these columns and then the fence.
Don't they duplicate what's on the addition?
They do. So it would be a decision to possibly treat the two parts of the house differently. They don't really, when you're looking at the front of the house and seeing the historic portion of the house, you don't really see the other facade on the side of the addition. Only a few, when you, it's only when you get further back that you see them both.
Thank you very much. I mean, it's a beautiful house, but I want to clarify, Ovanesian, you said if we can't let you put your name on it, you're withdrawing the whole application?
Come to the microphone, Mr.
That's what I heard.
Let me clarify a couple items.
Well, I asked you a question.
I'm sorry.
If, if we do not let you name it Casa de, excuse me, tongue tied, you're withdrawing the.
Casa de Ovanesian, yes.
Okay, well, I'm not ready to do that. You've lived there eight years and the Jensen's lived there over 20 years. No offense, but they have a longer history in this town than you do. Very active.
I, I can. Councilman, Councilman Weaver, I tend to disagree.
Well, that's not it, sir. Not a question disagreeing. It's my position.
That's fine. On the same.
I don't agree for that. The mayor does agree, I don't.
I understand, Councilman Weaver. On the same token, staff never addressed Chicago Band's lead singer, Chicago Band was the house, was known as the Chicago Band.
You answered my question, sir.
Thank you.
That's it. So.
We're not prepared to move forward if that is the, the council insists that.
All it boils down, it doesn't matter what the house looks like.
I think, yeah, I think in the end, there's still other steps to take to, to finalize that, that Mills Act, so you don't need to withdraw it today if that's.
If the council wants to take it under submission, come back, revisit it next week. Councilwoman Friedman isn't here. But let me state a couple items.
No, no, we're, we're okay.
We're commenting.
Yeah, but a couple of items I wanted to touch on as the staff had their.
We closed public.
We closed.
Closed the hearing. I'm speaking now, not you. I asked you one question, you answered it. Can you please sit down and let me finish up?
To clarify again, we, yes, we are not ready to proceed.
I heard you clearly. I do not back a name change. I didn't even know it was called the Jensen House, but I do know about the history of Jensen in this city. Mr. Ovanesian has been a very active person in this committee a long time. He's only lived in the house for eight years, or the Jensen's lived there at least 20 years. I don't think it ought to have a name on it, period. Put a street address on it. How many have their name on it? Brand Park? Okay, Brand has a pretty good history here. Do you tell me how many people, how many houses are named after people in this town? Ones that are, boy, they're known throughout the history of this city. It boils down to that, I'm not backing it. Two others agree with you, Mr. Mayor, then, then we can address what goes into the conditions.
Mr. Garcia.
Mr. Mayor, I was going to suggest maybe Mr. Platt can sort of expand a little bit on what the naming, what it means in terms of whether you call it Jensen House. But I just wanted, I'm just saying, I'm suggesting it as an option, but I just wanted to point out, you can also just choose not to give it a name, period. That's just also an option available to the council.
Why don't you hold off, Mr. Platt, and be on standby, please. Mr. Draymond.
Well, it seems like you asked the question, Mr. Mayor, what's in a name, and, you know, everybody's a critic. Everybody wants to get their oar in. Oh my, the only people we haven't heard from so far is the police officer in the back and the firefighter in the back. And, and before the night is over, we may hear from them on this topic too. First of all, I think there's some things that are far more significant with regard to this house than the name. And that's the thing we're getting all wound up about, and that is so far from the important thing on this particular structure. First of all, Mr. Ovanesian, it's just, it's an irony that is not lost on this council member, that historically speaking, you have not been in the past a big supporter of historic districts to begin with in your, your neighborhood. So I consider it not a flip-flop, but I consider it a change of heart, which says to me that the city is moving in the right direction with the creation of historic district, historic districts in the city. And I have to think that you believe that the city is doing it the right way because you're considering making your home a historic site. So I consider that kind of also your way of saying we're headed in the right direction. I hope that's what you're saying, for one thing. Secondly, it's a significant house. There's no question about that. And I agree that the, the arch is something that should go. If it were up to me alone, I would say that I think that the, that the little, little structures on top of the pilasters should go as well. And when you look at the photographs of the home prior to your ownership of it, Mr. Ovanesian, to me, without all of that, the, the home become, the house and its features become the star. And there aren't the, the, well, let's call it the interference of all of the other things that surround it. I, I actually attended part of the HPC meeting. I don't even know if you were aware of that because I sat in the back and I listened to some of the input and it was, you know, the, the input from the commission was sort of all over the place. There were certain things that there was, there was consensus about, the arch, I think was one of them. But the commissioners were not of a single mind with regard to the urns and the pilasters and all of that. But let's, let's come back to the name for a moment. Frankly, I would have been happier if the name you had wanted to come forward with was Casa Carmen for your, for your wife, who has done all of this and has been the hostess in all those many, many, many charitable functions you've held at your home. But let's talk about some of these historic names, not just in Glendale, but around, you know, the LA area. How about the Watts Towers? That's what they're called. That's what people commonly call them, but that's not the name of them. They're the Towers of Simon Rodea, but they're commonly called the Watts Towers. That suddenly, are we off the charts historically speaking because the public is calling it something that it wasn't originally named? How about the Alex Theater? It wasn't originally the Alex Theater, it was the Alexander, but we call it the Alex. How about Miradero? Or as the signs say, we've called it that tonight, Miradero. But it's, everybody knows it's a brand library. How many people do you know walking around that call it Miradero? I don't know anybody that does that except for people who are, you know, preservation wonks. I consider myself one of those, but I don't walk around calling it Miradero. To most Glendaleans, it's the brand library. How about the T.O. Potts Building in Montrose? It was the first commercial structure in the new Montrose that was built. It's still there, a slender sweet shop in it today. People don't know it as the T.O. Potts Building, they don't know it as anything because the history is that obscure sometimes. As Mr. Weaver said, Mr. Weaver was born and raised here and he's been here and involved in city government and all of that, but he had no idea about the Jensen family or their names. Knew, knew about the family, but that this was the, quote, Jensen House. And while I'm picking on Mr. Weaver a little bit, there was a meeting where Mr. Weaver mentioned that he would like to see the name of his street, which is where he lives, which is named for a former city council member, someday changed for Bob McFaul's name.
I said that?
Yeah.
That?
And so, so, so here it is. It's a name that was, you know, of a historic figure in our city, a council member, like a mayor too at one time. I think Havercamp, Havercamp.
Havercamp was, yes.
And we're talking about changing it, considering, well, maybe we should change that to, to McFaul.
You know, I'm just kidding.
The point is, there, there's a kind of silliness at some point to the naming, and that's why it's not a rule. It's kind of a tradition and it's kind of a policy. To me, the most important thing with regard to this property is that we get it on the, on the element, so to speak. But let me turn to Mr. Higani. We put you on the spot. There's been a lot of talk about the, the Masonic Temple Building and by anybody's.
There's other name for that, by the way. It's Templar Masonicker.
Whatever you say. But the point is, I think it's, I think most people agree it would be more important to see the restoration of that building and the, and to keep it on the element rather than what the name of it is going to be. So a couple of things, I'm, I'm a little disappointed in, see, I didn't even ask the question, I, I just bounced it off you, Mr. Higani, because I wouldn't do that to you, I guess. Anyway, I'm not trying to make light of this. It's an important structure, but it is a little disappointing that from both sides of this discussion, from Mr. Ovanesian's side, I have to say, Mr. Ovanesian, as much as I admire the fact that you're doing this, to come forward and say, only if, only if it's my name, otherwise I take the ball and go home, because I think you know and we know, it's an important structure in this city. And so, but it's also, I think, a little bit silly on our end to say, oh, if we, if it is not the Jensen House, then, you know, then we don't move forward either. So I'm not willing to, to allow, from my vote anyway, I, I don't have the say, obviously, but, but the, the way I view it is, I don't want to allow either side to take the ball and just go home. It's too important. If you truly believe in, in our historic districts and preservation and conservation of our historic structural inventory in this city, then to die on the hill of whether it's Casa Carmen or, or the Jensen House is kind of a silly argument. So, Mr. Mayor, I'm not, I'm not saying that I'm ready to second your, your support for Casa de Ovanesian, but nor am I willing to support the idea that we're just going to stop the conversation here because we can't agree on, on what's going to be on a plaque somewhere around this house or what people may call it regardless. You know what, Mr. Ovanesian? It may be called Casa de Ovanesian or Casa Carmen or that big house on the corner. Margaret's still always going to call it the Jensen House. And that's the way these things are. That's always the way these things are. So, anyway, you know, it can be Palace of the Stars Theater. To me, it's always going to be the Roxy. It's the way it is. Anyway, that's it, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to see the arch go. I, I'd also like to see the, the finials along the pilasters go. I'd love the, the pilaster, the pilasters go, but I understand there's also some measure of security that, that is necessary there and those are the things I'd like to see go. The name, I'm, I'm just not ready to lose this opportunity over that. I wish it had been couched differently here. Either you give me my name on it or I'm taking my ball and going home. But, but we're engaged in a little bit of that tonight too, Mr. Mayor, with, I think I've given you one, two, three, four, five examples of that.
Thank you.
I am not concerned with the name. I'm concerned with the integrity of the house and the integrity of the process in terms of what we delete. And I do agree that the columns are excessive, along with the columns there at the front, along with the urns, et cetera. I mean, this was basically done in 1995 and I think if it's brought back to its previous state, I think the, the house will look much better. It's more than a house, it's, it's really an estate. In terms of the name, I personally doesn't, don't think it needs a name, Ovanesian or Jensen or anything else. I'm, I'm not that big on naming places for deceased individuals. And in terms of the current occupant, I'm not particularly interested in that because I think that's going to lead to people coming in front of us in the future and wanting to name their particular historic home, you know. So for me, no name and let's get on with the, with the process.
Mr. Mayor, it has an address, 1770 Grandview. It has a name, 1770 Grandview.
Just to clarify on the architectural items, you're, you're talking about the arch?
Yeah, the arch for sure. And then the.
When you talk about the columns, there's columns on the front.
Right, the columns on the front. The columns on, no, the ones on the side, I agree with the staff. I think that's.
I think it'd be good for the record if maybe.
Okay.
Councilmember Quintero can.
For the addition. For the addition, I think those columns, those columns, I think, work well in terms of the addition. But the original structure with those columns, I don't know why in the world
You're okay with those columns on the addition?
On the addition, yeah. I think that, just as the staff described, I think
But on the front facade?
On the front, I
Think they should
I don't, I don't know why they, why they did that. And then all of the little architectural finials and all that, it doesn't add to the property. It just makes it very busy. And, I mean, the house itself is one, by far, one of the most scenic and architecturally significant homes. As you come driving up Brand and look over to the, I mean, up
Brandview.
Brandview and look over to the side. I mean, it's just, it has a tremendous presence. It doesn't need all the little things that were added in 95. It was obviously maybe easier for the current owner to go ahead and paint them and, you know, work with it. But if we're moving into a historic designation, I don't think we need to do that. It was just put on in 95, and that was it. The addition, by the way, I think worked very well. I think the architect and owner at the time did a wonderful job. It's a significant home. I think it should be on the, on the register.
Mr. Weaver?
Oh, yeah, it's a beautiful
Your 10 minutes are almost up, by the way, I want you
10 minutes? What are you talking about? Are you laughing at it? Must be a joke
Just a little levity. Go ahead, Mr. Weaver.
No, it's a beautiful house. If any house should have the designation, it should be this one. What is the significance of the name? Does it appear on something in perpetuity? He wants the name, so where does the name appear? I drive by, I call it by that name, or can I call it 17?
If, in fact, a name is added to the resolution and to the Mills Act contract, the name will appear on the plaque. Otherwise, the address will appear on the plaque.
Okay, so anybody driving by, Ovanesian, Casa de Ovanesian, or
Once a house is designated, we order a plaque. And as Jay said earlier, we tend to use just the pure address, except in cases when there is a name associated with the house.
Does it appear anywhere else, state register?
It'll appear in our, no, in our local register.
Local register under that name.
And let me just be clear on the process here. Regardless of what we decide as a council to have this listed on the, our registry and placed into Mills, Mills Act contract, that is not binding on the owner until he has one or two more steps in the process, correct?
Correct. There are conditions that he would have to meet.
Such as the arch, the finials?
Correct.
The columns and all that?
And if the conditions are not met, then we have the option of revoking the Mills Act contract through his process.
So it behooves us to come to some sort of understanding
Inclusion.
With this gentleman, if I'm not. Mr., I'd like to reopen the public hearing, just for a brief question. Mr. Ovanesian, reopening the public hearing.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Would the name Casa Carmen be acceptable to you if that was what the name was?
Casa de Carmen is fine with us.
Casa de Carmen. Is that the appropriate Spanish moniker?
It is.
Mr. Quintero?
Yeah, it's a Spanish name.
I mean, Casa de Carmen.
Casa de Carmen.
But if the name wasn't a big issue, then why are we discussing it?
I know.
We're adding columns, we're adding, et cetera, et cetera.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ovanesian. I'm closing the public hearing. So here's the dilemma. I mean, even if we vote it, and the name is, as Mr. Drayman put forth, is not acceptable, I don't know what the homeowner could do. Paint it blue, lop the top off, or do any other sort of modification, put vinyl windows?
It's still
Or other modifications. I was just jabbing, Mr. Platt. Correct? I mean, I think it behooves us, due to its location and its architectural significance, to preserve it as is.
Still have to go through a design review for modifications.
Well, I understand. But it certainly has much more leeway than if there was a Mills Act contract imposed upon
This isn't part of a historic district yet, is it?
Don't believe it is. Mr. Higani?
Yes, it could be a part of, it could be actually a part of a historic district.
But it isn't yet.
It isn't yet, but it is in the, in the process. There's a historic provision, a historic district process going on
Which would limit modifications if
Not necessarily. Not necessarily. It depends on whether or not it's a contributor. And if it is not, if it is a contributor, then there are some limitations.
Sure, it looks like a contributor.
Right, it is. And, but however, let me just say that, if it is designated in and of itself, then there's a whole level of significance that we're giving to the property. If I may, I can offer something. There are two actions that you would be considering tonight. One is the designation. As you designate it tonight, that'll be effective. The other one is the Mills Act contract. If you were to propose to choose Casa del Carmen, for example, for the name, then the applicant has the option of choosing that or not take advantage of the Mills Act contract, which I must stress is very beneficial to the property owner. There are significant financial benefits to the property owner to take advantage of the Mills Act contract. And if I may, I have heard the following. One is to call it just as the address, 1770 Grandview Avenue, or call it Casa del Carmen. And then, if you were to amend the resolution, we would amend Section 2 of the resolution to say with the following conditions at the end of the sentence, to that the stucco arch above the driveway be removed, and the gateposts will be repaired to match the existing stucco surfaces. With all working being completed, we would like to add a date by 12/31/2011. And if you would like, we could add a condition regarding the freestanding columns flanking the arched picture at the west front facade, which would be removed by the same date. And the decorative finials and urns at the top of the stucco piers along the perimeter fence will also be removed. If you were to consider all, any, or all of these, we could add those to the language tonight.
All right, I'll make that motion.
With the, there's the issue of the name, though.
Yes, you have the two options I mentioned based on
Will you make it with Casa de Carmen? Dell is, was correct.
Oh, man, I mean, you know.
Dell?
And by the way, my, my
They spend $100,000.
Hold on, Mr. Weaver. I think
Yeah, my, you know, in terms of names, I also feel the same way about public buildings. I am never happy, whether it's in Washington DC or somewhere else, when I read that a name has been put on a public building, as if that person somehow built that building. Anyway, well, I don't know. The applicant doesn't seem like he's particularly interested in what we've just discussed. But I'll make, I'll make that motion.
He needs the name, or he won't do it. May I look at it 10, 20 years from now, just like everything else in this city? We'll be gone, Mr. Ovanesian will be gone. People will look at that house, say, what a beautiful house. We won't necessarily attach a name to it, as you were alluding to. So, most important thing for us, I think, as a city, is to get that house protected, not only today, but for the decades to come. Let Mr. Ovanesian personally call it anything he wants, but in the record, we can put Carmen, which kind of flows a little better with the history of the area.
Turn with something like in the Well, let me just clear up the, Mr. Higani, let me just clear up, apparently you've said something that has interested the applicant. And I just want to make sure, the items that you enumerated, and I kind of lost concentration for a moment. You're talking about the arch, talking about the finials, you're talking about the columns in the picture, in the front, behind you indicates the front.
Hassan, your microphone.
The garden urns.
Your microphone.
Well, the ones
Mike.
Mike, Mike, Mike.
Right, we'll call those the finials.
Yeah, that's right. That's correct.
Which is what we've been talking about.
Exactly. I just gathered up what you said.
Okay, Mr. Drayman.
Okay, I agree with those things, with the exception of one. That is the, see, I'm not, let's also keep in mind, somebody's got to write a check, you know, to do all this stuff. We don't just wish it so, and then it just happens. The homeowner has to actually do this. So, and one of the things that's up there is, that I don't agree with, are the, and I don't know what we're calling them, the
Columns?
The columns that are a part of, they're almost, they appear to be almost like ball relief columns
Front.
On the front, the two white on either side of the arch. And from the photo, I can't tell well enough, they appear like they're part of this, now part of the facade of the house. Are they not?
No, they were actually added in 1995.
No, no, I understand that when they were added, what I'm saying is, are they freestanding?
They're primarily freestanding. They have
Can you go, Mike, Jay?
They are primarily freestanding.
Okay, I can see, thank you. I should have referred back to
So they're freestanding, sitting on a pedestal.
Yeah, for my money, the things that are, that are bothering me are the finials and the pilasters and the arch. Secondarily, would be the garden urns, but I'm not so concerned about that, because to me, they are, they are decorative elements of the garden itself. They are, you know. And me, those are, those are the issues. I'm not so concerned about the
Columns.
These structures, these columns here.
Mr. Higani?
I would like, if I may, to just again, try to distinguish between the historic designation and the Mills Act contract. One of the reasons behind issuing Mills Act contracts is to give a financial benefit to the owner, so that they can use part or all of the savings in restoring or and maintaining the property. Therefore, it is completely within your purview to expect for, in, as a trade-off for the Mills Act contract, certain improvements to be done to the property. The applicant was, what, the applicant was telling me that if it's going to be too costly, I'm not interested. However, I must stress that you can still designate the house and not issue a Mills Act contract, or issue a Mills Act contract and expect those improvements to be made.
These are tax credits and so on, that you're talking about? Plus an opportunity, perhaps, to do some of this with an, under an alternative building code, if it were, sure, okay.
Well, look, I mean, if, maybe we just need to put this off for a few weeks and see what the applicant and the staff works out, and, I mean
Mr. Quintero, you made a, you were making a motion, weren't you?
Yeah, I did, but
With everything, I'll second
We're not on, okay.
Second, and we can take a vote and see if it passes or fails. And is that for the Mills Act and?
Yeah.
And was there a name in that motion? Was it the Casa
Sure, Casa de Carmen.
Carmen.
Well, let's see if the vote and the motion carry a fly, shall we, Mr. Mayor?
Okay, let's just Motion, second, this includes removing the columns.
Right, and the Mills Act, all in one?
The name Casa de Carmen, removing the columns in the front and the finials on top of the pilasters.
And the arch.
And the arch.
My second.
Let's take roll call on
Councilmembers, Drayman?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Weaver?
Aye.
Mira Najarian?
Yes.
Okay, it passed.
Well, that saved a few weeks of
That passes, and again, it's up to the homeowner, then, if he wishes to pursue it, to the Mills Act level to, for formosa.
Mr. Mayor, point of clarification.
Mr. Starbuck?
The city attorney, how long does this contract sit out there?
Well, there's got to be, it's got to be signed within reasonable times. Is that your question? What will he agree to sign? The staff will sit down with him immediately, and if it looks like they can't come to terms within a reasonable period, will come back. So we don't even need to come back, we just want
It won't sit out there for an indefinite period of time?
No, no. In fact, the council has authorized specific conditions under which the staff can execute the contract. So if the owner's not willing to agree to that, we can either come back to the council if there's amendment proposed, or it'll just sit out there, no contract will be awarded.
Okay. Okay, let's move on to the next one, please.
And 9B is Director of Community Planning regarding Glendale Register of Historic Listings and Mills Act Contract for the property at 1446 Boulevard, Royal Boulevard at B1 is a resolution designating the property as a historic resource and authorizing a Mills Act contract.
Thank you, Mr. Platt.
Good evening, thank you. I think this nomination may be less dramatic and controversial. This is 1446 Royal Boulevard, which is located in the Royal Boulevard Historic District, and is a contributing structure in the district. You can see here, it's a colonial revival style property. It was built in 1936. And when we say that it's colonial revival style, it's definitely a different kind of colonial revival than we're used to seeing, where we're used to seeing rectangular, boxy volumes, very strong symmetry, and very much kind of based on precedent from East Coast and then English architecture. So this is kind of a more modern take on this style. It was designed by one of Glendale's more interesting architects, Merrill Baird, who also designed the house, one of the houses across the street that was previously designated by the council. It's called the McCall's House, which is kind of a French-style house. To show Baird's reign, she also designed the Municipal Services Building, as some of you know. So we're working with an architect who is really fluid and, you know, fluent in a lot of different styles. What we find interesting about this house is that it really works well with the other period revival houses in the neighborhood, especially the Spanish houses, which are known for being asymmetrical. So we have this kind of asymmetrical composition of these shallow gables facing the street, with the main body of the house perpendicular to them. When we started visiting the house and really considering it for the nomination, I was really impressed by the quality of the workmanship on this house. There's some really excellent woodworking, a lot of details that come straight from the colonial revival and then are applied in this kind of novel way. Interesting brickwork along here, where you have tall, or the bricks stood on end and then set on a diagonal, so it gives an extra texture to the house. This really fine entrance, the recessed entry, and then even up to the quality of the siding on the house. It's really exquisite craftsmanship all the way around. The owners, over the years, have taken great care with the property. There was, and this isn't an addition, but it was a servants' quarters that was turned into a family room. So this chimney was built somewhat differently from the original chimney to distinguish them. But there were some other alterations that had been made at the rear of the house previously that the owners actually went to the trouble of having new wood milled to exactly match the siding of the house when they were rebuilding the section and taking out some of the inappropriate previous alterations. When the commission saw this, they could not say that it was one of the best remaining examples in the neighborhood, but that's because we don't have a survey of this full area, so we can't really say what all of the colonial revival style houses look like here. But they did feel that it was outstanding, and if not outstanding, exemplary in its design, its details, and its workmanship, and felt that it was certainly meeting this criterion for designation.
I don't have any cards on, did I open the public hearing?
No, you did not.
Okay, I'll open the public hearing. I don't have any cards submitted, so I will postpone the public hearing. Mr. Drayman?
I was just curious, Mr. Mayor, what we're going to call it. Sorry, I couldn't resist. There've been several names suggested. Maybe we can take one of the leftover ones. I don't know if there are any other comments. I'm happy to move that.
You know, it's one interesting thing to think about. How many streets in this town are named for early people in this town? You made a joke of Havercamp Drive, but you can go way back. Names of people who influenced the city streets have been named after them. Most people don't even know it. They're just names. We don't do many houses, so I think we ought to skip on this one.
I have a question. Can we see the pictures of the house?
Have to allow me, allow me one moment to bring it back up.
Yeah. Mr. Platt, are there shutters missing on that window right above the doorway?
No, if we, I don't, if you go to the next slide already, you can see that has some nice scroll work and decorative woodwork. You're talking about the window above the
Exactly.
Yeah. So a window like that, that has that extra work, wouldn't typically have shutters next to it?
Kind of struck me as asymmetrical.
It is. Oh, it's a window.
But that, the window is symmetrical with the door below it, so.
No, I mean, well, I mean, all the other windows have shutters on them. That one just is out there. just is out there.
Yeah, I expect this is the original condition.
Should the architect?
Comments?
Want a motion?
If not, I'll take a motion.
Move 9B1.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Council members, Drayman?
Yes.
Friedman, Quintero?
Yes.
Weaver. Council member Weaver?
Aye.
Mayor Najarion?
Yes.
You?
Next item.
9C is Director of Community Planning regarding proposed ordinance changing the zoning designation from R1R-2 to R1-2 and/or establish a special setback for certain properties located along Hollister Terrace and adjacent streets. At C1 is the ordinance for introduction.
Mr. Weaver?
Mayor, I live within 500 feet of Hollister Terrace, so I've been advised that I have to recuse myself from this item.
Thank you.
I will make the right decision.
We will accept your recusal and bid you good night.
See you at oral communications.
Of course.
Thank you. Mr. Higani?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. You might remember that this item was introduced by a former city council member after the staff reviewed and recommended change of, zone change along Glen Oaks Boulevard to maintain the consistency of the front yard setbacks, and as a result, came up with a combination of zone changes. And after that, members of the adjacent street on Hollister Terrace apparently asked to have Hollister Terrace to be considered for the same. So the council asked staff to have a series of meetings to see if there was community interest, and there was. And after that, the staff has had more meetings with the community and has analyzed the material. We will not go over every meeting we've had, and I've asked Chris Magdekin to just give you the results of the analysis and our recommendation. I must emphasize that most of staff's recommendation is about creating a consistent set of rules for that area so that we will not come up with anomalies on every block, and that we can, we can have the same set of rules for a number of residences without creating non-conforming status for any of the properties. Chris Magdekin is the case planner.
And we had a proper notice and all this stuff and?
Yes, and we have confirmed that the, the properties with our GIS system.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. Mr. Higani gave a very nice introduction. What we did is reviewed per council's direction, the entire stretch of Hollister Terrace. As we can see in this slide, we reviewed the entire stretch of Hollister Terrace together with the blocks that are located between Hollister Terrace and Glen Oaks Boulevard. And staff identified three blocks, three blocks and a few sub-blocks which are, which complete the blocks, and recommended a zone change to an R1 zone from the existing R1R zone. The blocks where staff has recommended a zone change are blocks number five. Five A is this pocket here. It's not identified on this map, but it's on, in the packets. It's not identified on this map because there's not enough space to squeeze the lettering. Block seven, block 13, and 13A and 13BRD's pockets. These properties, the zone change was recommended because the building line is typically at the 25-foot setback line. Very few non-conformities would be created. The topography of these blocks is pretty much flat, and they would extend the R1, the R1 zone that was designated along Glen Oaks Boulevard. When we took this to the planning commission, the planning commission recommended two options to council. One option is a zone change for the blocks I just identified, one, two, and three, and the small sub-blocks, together with a special setback for blocks eight and 12. This is the preferred option from the planning commission. The second option, which is less preferred, is for the aforementioned, all of the aforementioned blocks, five, seven, I'm sorry, five, seven, 13, eight, and 12, just a special setback of 25 feet, no zone change. Staff's recommendation is slightly different because any change to blocks eight and 12 would involve the creation of non-conforming buildings. So staff's recommendation is to keep things simple. Because of the topography that lends itself to the R1 zone, to just rezone blocks five, seven, 13, together with the small sub-block pockets, to an R1 zone. So in a nutshell, this covers the entire staff report. The slides are basically showing the existing zone in the area. This is a copy of the zoning map, which identifies the different blocks where the change is being proposed, and the neighboring blocks. This is the entire stretch, or the western stretch of Hollister Terrace. The blocks where the change is being recommended by staff are blocks five, five A, block seven, and further east. This is the eastern portion of Hollister Terrace. A zone change is being recommended for block 13, and the two pockets of R1R zone here, to an R1 zone. The remaining slides are the GIS maps that we use for scaling and determining the front setbacks. We scaled the front setbacks. On the GIS maps, we also did some spot checks in the field to verify our measurements. So as you can see, block five, which is recommended for an R1 zone, the buildings are set back approximately 25 feet from the front property line. With a 25-foot setback, very few non-conformities would be created. Going further east, block seven, the buildings are set back similarly. Going further east, block 13, where the change is being recommended, the buildings are set back quite a bit. A 25-foot setback would create very few non-conformities. However, across the street, where the planning commission recommended a change, blocks, blocks eight and 12, the setbacks vary quite a bit, and a 25-foot setback recommendation would create a significant number of non-conforming buildings. That's why staff is not recommending any changes for blocks eight and 12. I would like to wrap up my presentation unless there are questions of council.
I did.
Questions?
Well, I just have one because I assume you all received the same letter from one of the residents, and it has to do with his particular lot, and how the setback would, are you familiar with this letter?
Yes.
Yeah, how would you answer his concerns?
That property's in block five, where an R1 zone is being recommended. The existing R1R zone, for any new building or accessory, detached accessory buildings would require an interior setback of 10 feet. And based on the arguments raised in that letter, for a 50-foot wide lot, taking away 10 feet from both sides wouldn't leave much to build on. And the letter supports the recommendation of an R1 zone, which has a smaller interior setback requirement of six feet versus the 10 feet in the R1R zone. So that letter supports the recommendation, staff's recommendation, not the planning commission's recommendation.
Very good. I do have two speakers. I will open the public hearing. Mike Mohill, called by Charles Lysing.
Mike Mohill, resident of Glen Oaks Canyon. I'm concerned about Hollister Terrace as well as the street Glen Oaks Boulevard. I was instrumental in bringing this forward in the first place, if you recall. A couple of things bother me. By the way, was the, was the letter you got, Mr. Quintero, was that from the Tortor Tally people, Bonnie and Frank?
No.
Because they had called me on the phone, they said they were going to, they were going to write a letter.
No.
Okay, that's fine. I don't know who they are then, okay. I like the, I, we like the idea of the setback being 25 feet. The thing that bothers me, and maybe I need some clarification, because it was brought up at the zoning the last day by one of the commissioners, was the side lot, the side from house to house. Is it such that if a person tears down his house, and he wants to put up a new house, will the new side lot requirements mean that he can be closer to his new neighbor, to his neighbor? That was being raised by the commissioners, because the comment was being commented like, well, you know, the house is up there by mountain, the new ones, all the houses are close together, like six feet. And when you, when you flush your toilet, your neighbor next door gets to hear it. And this lady commissioner was saying, you know, this doesn't sound right, but they had already closed the, the meeting, and no public comment could be made. So my concern is setback between the side lot, between the houses. Because if someone decides in the future to destroy a particular house, can he, can he encroach to his neighbor? So this neighbor, side neighbor will now have, where he has, in the path, let's say, 10 feet, he's now only going to have six feet. So that bothers me, that troubles me. I don't know what staff is saying on that. Okay? Other than that, thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Charles Lysing.
Hello, my name is Jeff Lysing. I live on Hollister Terrace. I came down here because I, the letter I got seemed to indicate these, the zoning change was going to apply to all of Hollister Terrace, and apparently it's not. So I could keep this fairly short, because I live in the last block, and it looks to me as though the last block is not being considered. That block, by the way, is, is running up into the hills, it's backed by hills, and the property line is about 15 feet inside of the, of the road, and most people there don't even know that. But I, I've just gone through a permit process here with Glendale and found that the drawings of the planning commission, the drawings of the engineering department are different. And so our property lines are 15 feet closer to us than most people think. And that would have a serious impact if we tried to apply this to the last block, but I, apparently, you're not doing that. And I think it would be very unwise to do it, because there'd be a lot of non-conforming houses. Do I understand this right? So it's not being applied to the last block? Okay. Thank you very much.
Sir, I have a, sir, I did have a, when you say the last block, you mean the last block as you enter the canyon?
It's, yes, the last block to the east, it's, it's going up a hill, it's, it's a cul-de-sac, it's a dead end. Okay?
Thank you.
Okay, I don't have any other speakers. I'll close the public hearing. Mr. Drayman?
Higani, what about the side setbacks?
I'm going to ask Chris to give you more details, but if you remember, when we actually revisited this item on Glen Oaks Boulevard, the trade-off of changing the zoning designation was that you would not be allowed to add to the height, but instead you would be allowed to have a little bit more to the sides, so that if people are remodeling, they will be more inclined to actually remodel at one or two stories as opposed to three stories. That was the original discussion we had with the community, and we are proposing the same thing that we did on Glen Oaks Boulevard up here for the same reasons. And if you want more details on the numbers, Chris can give you those details.
I may add a little bit.
No, I, I think that answers the question, so.
Questions? Any other questions? So the staff recommendation is, we need to specify the blocks, five?
No, the ordinance, cover, includes the ordinance, the, excuse me, the blocks the staff is recommending. So if a council member introduces that ordinance, then that's the ordinance back next week.
I will introduce the ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Quintero. So the vote will be next week on that. Let's move on to the next item, please.
9D is Director of Community Planning regarding Glendale Register of Historic Resources Listing and Mills Act Contract for the property at 2096 Rimcrest Drive. At D1 is a motion to continue to November 30th, 2010, without further public notice.
So moved.
Second. Roll call, please. I don't have any other cards on that. That's continuing this item without further notice. Roll call.
Council members, Drayman?
Yes.
Friedman, Quintero?
Yes.
Weaver? Mayor Najarion?
Yes.
Item?
We return to oral communications.
Yeah, I don't have any cards for oral communications. Is there a motion to?
So moved.
So moved.
Margaret Hammond, Sheldon Baker, Mike Mohill, and Lenore Solis.
This portion of discussion is limited and is not part of this agenda. Each speaker has a five minutes. Council may question or respond to a speaker, but there'll be no debate or decision, and the matter may be referred to staff through city manager for an investigation and a report.
Margaret Hammond.
Your Honor, members of the council, city staff, and the audience. Okay, first off, my, one of my things in life is, of course, collecting things for the troops for Christmas. And I have a list, and I believe already did it for me, and this is just a few of the items. And some of them, remember, when you go on trips, cruises, and things, you get a lot of those little bottles of shampoo and lotion, conditioners. That is the kind of things they really like. And, but things like chapstick, you know, instant, just think about it, instant coffee, diet soups, things that you take for granted. But for them, these are treats. They're treats for the guys. They can't get them at the PX, and there's certainly no 7-Eleven or whatever down the corner to pick them up. So if you want to, you know, call me, I would be happy to collect them. I'm going to be going down in the next week or so to take them down to the American Legion at Newport, because they're close to Pendleton, and they will ship them out of there to the troops. So anyway, thank you very much for that. I remember also, the doctor's house is going to be having their moonlight, uh, moonlight, their candlelight tour, well, maybe it'll be moonlight, December the 11th and the 18th. And that's a chance to see the house. It's open, it's free and whatnot, and it belongs to the residents of Glendale. So if you would remember that and take advantage of. And there'll be refreshments and so forth, music, and it's fun. The Casa Adobe San Rafael is open, going to be open the week before that on December the 3rd, I think it is, oops. Anyway, it'll be open the weekend before and for the luminaries, which is beautiful, if you haven't been there to see that house lit up. It's really a prize to see. Now, the other thing is, the members of Glendale Homeowners Coordinating Council took a vote at their last meeting and to, and made a motion to have the city council contact our responsible state officials to get that DMV office open. We've had so many talks, people calling us and talking to us, and our city deserves to have our DVM, our DMV office open, based on the population and the importance of our city in this area. Al would be here, but he couldn't be here, had a health problem, and he may speak on it again. Anyway, we're asking you again to please do what you can to get that DMV. I've had so many people having to go to Simi Valley, having to go, you wouldn't believe it. Pasadena wait for four hours. It's, it's, I mean seniors up in their 80s, you know, 90s, having to wait and wait. And now, the other thing that I want to bring up is the, and where have the pictures of our founding, the city fathers disappeared, or being buried, or whatever, in a capsule, or whatever? And when will those photos appear on our walls of our city hall again? They were here all those years, and then all of a sudden, at this point, they're gone. I, I don't think that's fair. I don't think that's very fair, because those men deserve the honor of having their pictures. They served, and they served their terms, and they were very well thought of in this city. And then again, I also ask where the beautiful city seal that used to be on the back wall, the beautiful colored one? It was hand-done. I don't remember what city gave it to us, but I'd like to know where it is and why it isn't being put up again. I would appreciate an answer or finding them, or show me where they're at, and maybe we can get some volunteers to put them back up on the wall. And I do think it's important. Now, you know, getting back to the GWP increase, the water rates, you know, how can you expect seniors who have had no increase to be able to pay the increased water and power? It's going to be very hard. And from what I heard last week, it seems to me that the tenants in apartments and so forth, their rate was going to be 250 or something for the average household, but theirs was 7.5. Now, I've already heard from some of my friends, and they said, "Well, if we have to pay the increased water, we're going to have to raise our rent," and that's all there is to it. And that's not good, because then we're going to have a lot of tenants down here complaining, wanting rent control, in part caused by the fact that owners feel that they have to raise it in order to keep up with all their expenses. So keep in mind that there's always, what shall I say, results or whatever, when you... It's like one thing leads to another. And in this case, it will definitely lead to a lot of people being upset with the water and power increase. Thank you very much.
You, Sheldon Baker appears to have left. Mike Mohill, followed by Lenore Solis.
Good evening, Mayor Nijarian, council members. You know, a little while ago, a member from the public came forward and spoke about the treasures report, and a member from the city council belittled that individual when he wanted to talk about the treasures report. How do you expect people from the public to come forward and talk about an issue when a public official belittles somebody who wants to speak? Not very nice. Now for what I want to talk about. I'm just doing my job. We're told by council, time after time, these past several years, the budget is balanced, but owned to be told otherwise. In June 2010, Jim Starbird said he was to get back with council with updated figures by October, and here we are in November, still waiting for those figures. In 2008, our city manager said the budget was balanced and recommended over $8 million in pay raises for our city employees. By the year... By the end of 2008, Mr. Starbird informed the public, city services had to be cut by about $10 million because of lack of revenue. Every year since then, the budget has been... Has never been balanced. Mr. Starbird said the estimate for this year could very well be off, and we should expect another $8 million in Shark Falls for next year, too. Mr. Starbird, two weeks ago, said the Glendale city managers made major concessions by not taking their cost-of-living allowance pay. But what is a major concession? When he and our city council tell the Glendale City Employees Association, the worker bees of the city, to take a 1.8% pay cut. Recently, city... The city has posted online Mr. Starbird's contract for the public to see. It is interesting to note the big differences that he has over the rest of the city employees. First, our cash poor city has cut many of our city services and raised fees, rates, and taxes, and is paying 100%, I said 100% of Mr. Starbird's pension contribution. So why are the council members exception? Or are they an exception? Second, Mr. Starbird will be getting an additional 6% deferred compensation. Thank you, city council members. That is like an additional $35,000 a year income. Sadly, both the payment to the city manager Starbird's pension and his deferred pension compensation are not affected by the contract forced on the Glendale City Employees Association members. Such a sweet deal. Mr. Starbird has a year severance package when he departs the city, while the rest of the GCEA members can be out the door on a whim of any manager without nothing with nothing to lose. And who says Glendale is not looking like the city of Belle? Like Belle, we have financial reports that are cooked and spiced up by the city management team of Mr. Starbird, and the poor public is living on social security, unemployment checks, food stamps, and the like. The CAFRA report, that's the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, is always being reported as whistle-clean. So why has the city replaced its auditors not once, not twice, but three times in the past 10 years? Are these just fluff reports, as many believe? City manager Mr. Riso in Belle said he was just doing his job. I guess Mr. Starbird and our city council can say the same. I'm just doing my job. Thank you.
You, Lenore Solis.
Good evening, Lenore Solis, resident of Glendale, here to remind everybody that tomorrow is our Glendale Publican Assembly meeting. It would normally be next week, but since that's the week of Thanksgiving, we moved it up one week. It's from 6:30 to 9:00 at Clancy's Restaurant on Central. And be sure to park in the parking lot. It's complimentary, because if you park on the street, you'll get a ticket. So be sure and park in the parking lot. I also wanted to comment about tickets. A friend of mine, my friend Lee, several months ago told me about getting... Having a... She went to Portos, and she got a ticket on her car, and thankfully, she still had her receipt from the meter, and the ticket was issued to her 10 minutes before her meter was expired. And I thought, oh, it just must be, you know, mistakes happen, and they looked at the wrong number or something. But I've had two other people tell me that the same thing has happened to them. One of them didn't have their receipt and had to pay the parking ticket, and the other person did have their receipt. So if you have your receipt, then of course, they don't make you pay for the ticket. But I don't know if it's... There's something wrong with the machine, or there's something wrong with the way that people were trained to issue the tickets. I don't know, but, you know, we're trying to get people to come and shop in our city, and so it's not very friendly if, you know, you put money in the meter for two hours and then you come out an hour and 45 minutes later, and you got a ticket and you don't have your receipt. So I think, you know, we... I don't know if you need... If there's a problem with the machine, I don't know what it is, but I think we need to be made aware of that. Another thing that I've noticed is that, you know, the men have a bathroom right outside the door, and the doors used to be open to go into the management office to use that restroom, but now it's locked, so if the women want to go to the restroom, we have to go downstairs. So I was hoping that maybe you could make this restroom just a restroom for whoever wants to walk in and lock the door and use it, so that, you know, we don't have to go downstairs to use the restroom. We miss like 10 minutes of the meeting, and you guys can get in and out like in three. So maybe you can think about changing the restroom, so that that restroom that's right outside the door here is just a general restroom for everybody. And I wanted to make a mention about our police department. You know, I... It saddens me to see that we have our doors locked in the evenings. I mean, here we are, the third-largest city in the county of Los Angeles, and we don't have a police department that's open 24/7 in terms of the building. We have this beautiful building, but, you know, you have to stand outside and call a police officer on a little apparatus there. And, you know, I know people were complaining about the police officers not wanting to take a reduction in their increase in salary, and it's so unfair, and don't they get it? But, you know, I think a lot of people may not, I mean, may not get it. You know, I've worked with the Los Angeles Police Department for over 20 years. I've been a chaplain at the Twin Tower Correctional Facility for the Sheriff's Department for six years. I think the difference is that when you put on a police officer's uniform, you know, wherever you go, you're someone's target. You know, even if you sit down and have your dinner, you know, somebody's... You're a target. Everywhere you go, you got to be on guard. You show up at Disneyland with your family, and some guy you busted sees you there, and who knows what's going to happen? So I think, you know, when people try to compare the fire and the police, absolutely the fire department, you know, are phenomenal, and they have to run into a burning building, something I would never do. But, you know, I just think that, you know, they show up at a restaurant, and people are, you know, patting them on the back, because, you know, they're firemen. They can go shopping and not worry about it. But I think that, you know, we really have to consider the risks and what it takes to be a police officer. And I'm a little bit concerned about our gang unit here in Glendale. You know, some issues have occurred recently that have made me concerned about the training and how they are going about identifying, you know, what is a gang member and who is not a gang member. You know, today, my son flew out to Washington DC. He's auditioning tomorrow for the Army Chorus. This has been his dream to be in the Army Chorus, and they have an opening for a tenor, so he's out there. He'll be auditioning tomorrow morning. I hope the good people of Glendale will think of him in their prayers tomorrow. But, you know, I don't... I mean, you all know my son. I don't think he looks like a gang member, but a couple of weeks ago, he was pulled over. And, you know, honestly, I mean, I don't think my son looks like a gang member. I mean, I don't think I'm blind, but, you know, I think that a good training, you would know the difference between a gang member and a non-gang member. And I understand that, you know, racial profiling is an ugly term, and I... But I understand that sometimes we have to use it. But I think if you have good training, you should be able to differentiate between who is truly a gang member and a threat to our community and who is not. And I think it's really important that if you are not properly trained in this area, you could end up, you know, upsetting some, you know, youth unnecessarily. And I think it's really important that we train our officers well, so that they don't misidentify who is a gang member. Thank you.
Very much. Robert, how about those?
Ms. Solis, if you don't mind, a couple of questions?
Okay.
Because I want to follow up on your comment. Your son was pulled over by a Glendale police officer? And when was it?
You know, he's not here, but it was on Central.
I'm sorry, it was last year?
No, 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 a couple of weeks ago.
Couple of weeks ago, on Central?
On Central. He was going to Conrad's.
And he was pulled over because...
I don't know.
You don't know? Your son doesn't know why he was pulled over?
He knows.
Why was he pulled over? Why was he told?
I mean, I don't remember. I don't remember, but he knows.
It might not be appropriate to get into the details.
Okay, well, we'll pull that one. Second, thank you. Secondly, in response to Mr. Mohill, it's too bad he didn't stay around for the answer. My contract is posted on the city's website, has been for some time. There's actually an original contract from March of 1998, and there's a supplement to it, I think, from 2003, I believe. My original contract of 13 years ago provides that the city will pay the employees' contribution to PERS. That's never occurred. I've never asked for it. It's never been implemented. I pay the employees' full share, and I pay 2% of the employer's contribution to PERS like all the rest of the city employees. That's been that way for the last 13 years I've been employed by Glendale, contrary to the contract. The contract provides the city will pay 6% deferred comp. That's never been implemented. I've never asked for it. I receive no comp, no deferred compensation from the city. To clarify those two items, a question has come up since the contracts have been posted. They're the original contracts. Those provisions have never been implemented. We change our auditors every three years to five years. It's good management and fiduciary practice, so that you don't have auditors who become comfortable with you and your routine.
I agree.
Essentially, they check on each other, and that's why in 10 years, we've had three different audit firms. And this year, you'll hear from the current auditors that there were issues they found in the former auditor's audit reports, which they have corrected and adjusted. So that gives you fresh eyes looking at this independently every three to five years, the appropriate practice, and we do it about every three years. I think that responds to his question.
Well, in defense of Mr. Mohill, he's just doing his job.
He's just doing his job. I wish he'd get his facts straight. I think he doesn't like to be corrected, as I did last week.
The issue is, where did you hide the pictures in City Mosaic?
Let me respond to that one, too. Too bad Steve isn't here, because I know he would. The pictures have been at the Central Library being digitized, so that we can better reproduce them and get a better quality. They will come back to City Hall to be hung. I think already the city clerk is working with Public Works on an appropriate location for them.
And also, for anyone who wants to look them up, they already have been scanned. They're available if you go to the library's website and do a search for Mayor. You'll see the entire listing by order, terms they served. So I think it's a more complete record than was actually hanging on our walls. And that record has been verified with our city documents, and, I mean, it's meticulously done so by a volunteer in the city clerk's department.
But the photos will be reframed with more contemporary frames and displayed in City Hall.
And the seal, Margaret, is in the back here, right next to the jacuzzi in the bathroom.
I don't think it's in the man's restroom.
And how about the... Can we look into the parking meter violations? Can we just make sure that there aren't mistakes being made? There's an indication being made that people that have parked and have time left are receiving parking violations. Did you hear that? Were you paying attention during that part of the oral communications?
Okay, cool.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Mullins.
If somebody feels they recited incorrectly, then we can follow it up and check it.
And I'm not talking about a specific... Let's just... It's been a year or so, a year and a half since we've had those. Let's just make sure that we're not having any...
This is the first time I've heard of that.
Technical issues.
Mr. Mayor, can we identify which parking lot? Portos?
Behind Portos, okay. And I'm not indicating that errors were made, but let's just make sure...
And I might just note, the dispensers give you a receipt which notes the time. All they have to do is take that. If indeed they received a ticket, that will also note the time. It's pretty easy to verify whether or not somebody received a ticket inappropriately.
You are feisty this afternoon.
No, I just want to be responsive to these things, that's all.
I always keep receipts.
Mr. Drayman?
Well, while the city manager is on a roll, I think we should also bring up the issue of the restroom outside there. So the question was, could it be a, simply a restroom?
Unisex or...
With a lock on it?
Yes, it's possible. It's a... It has an interior stall as well as urinal. It could be. I just want to point out, there is an elevator, and I suspect you can take the elevator down to the women's restroom as easily as you can walk to where the previous restroom was. I will bet you it is as close.
But the question was, not about whether or not you can ride down or walk down. The question was, why should they not be able to see as much of this council meeting as the man you'll recall?
I'll point out again, I suspect you can use one of the ground floor as easily and quickly as you could use the one that was in Management Services.
I think we should do a test. Mr. Mayor, I would suggest the city manager and Ms. Solis show up in their tracksuits, and we will time them. All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Other comments?
We adjourn.
Second.
We adjourn.